Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Program Personnel Committee to order. We can go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Next on the agenda is an invitation for public comment. Paul Carnseth, the D-128 Union Secretary, is here to talk about FTE.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Paul Carnseth. I'm a science teacher at LHS, and I'm the Secretary of the D-128 Federation of Teachers. Typically, we speak at the general board meetings, but we felt this message was too urgent to wait until next week. At this committee meeting, you will receive the annual staffing report from district administration. Just last Wednesday, our union president, Monica Caldecott, was informed that admin plans to lay off multiple teachers and introduce several full-time teachers, including one tenured teacher with five years of experience, to part-time positions. Overall, 9.7 full-time equivalents, or FTE, could be eliminated from the general classroom setting. This is an unprecedented number. We have asked but have received no answer to the question, when was the last time a D-128 tenured teacher was laid off? It will be pointed out to you that 6.0 of FTE of these cuts were repurposed into support roles in the different categories of FTE, saving on some jobs, but that does not change the impact these cuts have on our classrooms. We've started to dig into the numbers that were sent to D-128 staff at 11:00 PM on Wednesday night, and these decisions would cut deep into our staff. We've been told by admin that the board, you, expect FTE to decrease along with enrollment. Classroom FTE was cut nearly 5% in this proposed staffing report. Course requests and enrollment are only trending around a 2% decrease. This is not staffing decrease along with enrollment. This is decreasing past enrollment. If you look at the eight-year overall trend, we have a very similar, even slightly higher number of course requests than we did eight years ago, but 16 less FTE. Most of the FTE loss has occurred in the last four years, when many more administrative positions have been created. Our admin just recommended the largest cut of classroom FTE in the last eight years, according to the statistics you will see tonight. In January, we presented you with data that showed the number of classes over optimum class size has increased as FTE has decreased. We encourage you to ask questions about why this is. We told you FTE cuts have gone too far. Two months later, here we are. We're seeing unprecedented cuts in FTE that outpace the decrease in enrollment. It will follow that there will be even more classes above the optimum next year. Do we really intend to release or reduce excellent teachers and further exacerbate the large-class problem? It's important to point out that we hire excellent teachers in D-128 who come here with experience and prove their excellence elsewhere before coming here. If you were a veteran teacher, why would you leave a good job elsewhere and put your family at risk to work for an employer that will treat you as a one-year filler and release you in a cost-cutting measure? If you're a young teacher who is watching your colleagues get released, why would you serve on a district committee, volunteer for a district initiative, or try an innovative teaching method when you may not be around to see any long-term results? This morning, we sent the list of clarifying questions to admin. We will return to deliver a more detailed message at your Monday, March 18 board meeting as we scramble to deal with this 11th-hour shock. In the meantime, we hope to hear many questions and deep discussion of the staffing plan before it is up for approval next week.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, moving on. For discussion, we have 10 items. The first is the 2024-25 IHSA membership renewals. This is something that happens annually. Bryant, perhaps you can take us through this.
Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School participate in Illinois High School Association for Athletics and Activities. And so this is our annual renewal cycle for both of those schools. And you'll also notice in the renewal, there are no dues to participate in the IHSA.
Very good. Anybody have any comments? Okay, moving on to Ombudsman Alternative Education Services Agreement. This again is an annual agreement.
And this year, last year, we put in for two slots for ombudsman. We are using both of those two slots. So again, we are putting in for, reserving two slots for next year for the 24-25 school year. And if we get any more above that, then we would just pay on a as-needed basis. It's a little higher rate, but you know, I think just past numbers, this is the right number to allocate.
Again, any questions?
I have a, oh, I don't know if this, my end. Okay, doesn't sound like it. There we go, now I hear it. On Slide 2 of that attached document, I was just a little confused about the equation that's featured in the center of the page. And I think I may have just realized it, but if you could kind of speak to what that, that two to eight.
So if you, if you, if you reserve slots, the minimum that you can reserve is two, maximum is eight, and so we've reserved two slots, and that's, we used two this year. I think we used three or four last year and four the year before. So just, we're reserving two slots.
So right now, we're calculated for two students to
Yes.
utilize the services, but should that increase to, say, three, four, then the charges reflect as such?
Yes.
What if you go down to one, same thing?
And you're still paying for two.
Okay.
So you're, you know.
It's like a better safe-than-sorry type of situation. Okay, thank you.
The third item, Item C, is the Intergovernmental Agreement for Physical Therapists, District 70 and District 120.
Yeah, so the next two intergovernmental agreements that I'm going to bring to you are agreements for, the first one in C is our physical therapy needs, and currently, our physical therapy needs in the schools are provided by SEDOL, Special Education District of Lake County. However, we have struggled, a lot of schools have struggled to have some of these services provided by SEDOL. So in talking to District 70, District 120, which is Monaline High School District, we want to get together and hire a physical therapist that would provide services for all three schools. Due to the needs of our students, District 70 actually is looking at three days a week for the physical therapist. District 128, us, would be one day, and District 120 would be one day a week. So it'd be a full-time physical therapist. District 70 would be hiring the physical therapist and be their employee, and then we would be contracting services, much like we're contracting services with SEDOL, we would be contracting with District 70. Our lawyers have reviewed the agreement, and so, did I, did you lose me? We reviewed the agreement, and then we would bring that to our board meeting for approval. And District 70 has approved it, and then District 120 is working on their approval also.
So just to clarify, this is to alleviate a need that we have where our special ed students are not able to adequately get the physical therapy services that we need them to have. So this would alleviate that.
Correct. So we, we are contracting with SEDOL to get those services, but we are not always getting those services. They are struggling to hire employees, and we felt, the three districts felt, and Kelly Hartwick felt, this was our better solution to make sure, ensure that our students have the physical therapy needs for next school year.
It's similar in other instances when we've tried to take back services.
We didn't have the ability or the needs to take back the whole position, but in collaboration with our two neighboring districts, the three of us together are taking back this position. So we'll be hiring the staff and overseeing the staff, rather than having SEDOL do that for us.
So that's the intergovernmental agreement for the physical therapist. The next one in D is the intergovernmental agreement for the hearing itinerant. This one would be just with District 120 and us. So currently, we, again, get our hearing itinerant needs through SEDOL, struggle to get those from year to year, because they're trying to service a huge county and all over. So with our needs, and our needs have increased also, so they can't meet our needs. So we would partner with District 120, so Monaline High School, but in this case, we would, we would hire the hearing itinerant, because we're looking at using that person 60% of the time, and District 120, 40% of the time. So they would, you know, come into our wages and fringe benefits and all of that. So we would handle that, and then we would invoice District 120 for their services.
Is that backwards?
Do I have a?
Because this says District 120 agrees to pay District 120 60%.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're 40%, and they're 60%, but we are going to hire the person, partly because of scheduling and trying to hire the right person. So we are going to take ownership of that person. I'm sorry. You're right, Don.
Okay.
And so this is our draft document, and we're just making sure that we're ready to have the final document to you at the board meeting for approval.
And both of these are for next year?
For next school year, yes.
As far as cost, is this kind of a net zero?
It would be about a net zero for the cost.
So rather than requiring SEDOL to kind of, I know we can't require them, the main thing is to get our students their services that they're entitled to.
Correct.
But.
In terms of the cost, it could be, net zero could be a little less, it could be a little more, it kind of depends on who you hire and how much experience they have. It's not.
But similar, no.
But as like a, for lack of better words, à la carte item that we typically receive from SEDOL, this will no longer be a part of our, you know, agreement with them. So this next year, when we're renewing our membership into SEDOL, this will be a line item that's no longer part of it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Which we've already done.
Okay. We're done.
So, and we've taken back occupational therapists from SEDOL, we've taken back transition pathways from SEDOL, we've taken back our ELS program from SEDOL, so we've taken back a lot of those programs. And it had been very successful, both financially and also for our students.
Okay, and may I ask one more question?
Sure.
What is happening then in the interim when there's a lack of services through SEDOL, and we have these students in our district or onsite at SEDOL schools who aren't receiving these services, plus the extended school year piece of it that runs through SEDOL? I just worry that there's a gap in services, is all.
And we are doing our best to either find the gap in services or get coverage, but it's been difficult yet.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about either of those intergovernmental agreements? All right. Moving on to Item E, the annual certified staffing report.
Sure. So I'll review a little bit, and the calendar of events was posted on the agenda. So going back to, this process really starts back in November, and looking at new courses for the year, looking at in December, any updates in programs for this year. And so that's when we started having discussions regarding some of our intervention programs, and you'll see that reflected in our staffing recommendations. Then we begin the course selection with our students, so our current students, 9 through 11, also eighth-grade selection, so with our feeder schools. Once that process is done, then our course selection data is tabulated for building administration, including the department chairs. Again, we incorporate the optimum class size, which is Appendix F of the teacher contract, and I'll talk a little bit about that, how that was incorporated for the second year this year. So this will be the second year with these current numbers. And then we also have, where we have some staff that desire to be in part-time positions, that all gets incorporated by February 1st, so that when we go into our district sectioning meetings, so again, the buildings will work on their sectioning meetings, so the course selections by the students, and each department chair will meet with our building administration team, so our assistant principal for student services, assistant principal for teaching and learning, they meet with the principals, they review that data. Then our whole team normally meets for three days at the end of February, so that team being the district office staff, district leadership team, and then plus that building leadership team. So again, principal, assistant principal for student services, and assistant principal for teaching and learning. This year, however, we spent five days to ensure, again, that we were going through the data and making, you know, the right recommendations for our courses, also with the change in our intervention models. That took a little bit more time to ensure that we were doing the right things. From there, we then had our department chairs, yeah, part of that sectioning process, too, is looking at our staffing, and there are people behind that, so our teachers. And so we do, you know, take a long time in looking at that and how that affects people, and we have to make recommendations on all of our part-time staff. And then, again, if we don't have the FT available in a department, we look at people's certification and what they can teach, and then we have to, again, make recommendations. That'll be in our employment recommendations, that piece, but I can walk through that a little bit more. So now, you know, we're bringing to you kind of our staffing detail. And so one of the things that we've done over the years is that we've started to break out our teacher FTE into different categories. So years ago, when I first started, teacher FTE was kind of all incorporated into one big category. We've tried to identify areas that FTE is allocated towards. So when you're looking at the staffing, you're looking at your classroom FTE. So when students sign up for your general education classes, that's where our FTE is. Then when you look at, next section, we have our classroom FTE Intervention and Services, and so this is where we break down and look at our English learners. One thing we did this year, too, is try to show you three years. Normally, it's just year-over-year from the past year. So we did a three-year, and you could see that EL has gone from 4.3 FTE to 6.9 is our recommendation for next year. PAWS, in, two years ago, was at 5.6. Our recommendation is at 10.8. So our PAWS intervention model, the reason for the increase is that we have had PAWS for students that have identified with executive functioning skills, and we have those classes. Last year, we did make a change at Vernon Hills, and we had our students that are identified with executive functioning placed into PAWS, but we also had students that were identified that needed help in numeracy and literacy with those skills. And so we took our English teachers and math teachers, and they were allocated toward PAWS last year. That's why there was a slight increase last year at, from Vernon Hills. And then this year, we made that full switch at Libertyville and changed our numeracy and literacy PAWS. With that change, part of the reason, going back to the classroom FTE, part of the reason that that has decreased is that our team teaching in three areas, so English, math, and science, team teaching is when you have two general education teachers in the same classroom. And so that, so having two math teachers teach Algebra I, or two math, and then two science teachers teaching biology in the same classroom. So with that team teaching, that has decreased over time, we've now fully eliminated team teaching. We have fully incorporated co-teaching. Co-teaching is where you have a general education teacher and a special education teacher in the classroom. And then now we have increased the PAWS intervention, and in that PAWS intervention, again, the students that are identified really in those three areas, numeracy, literacy, and executive functioning. The other thing why PAWS seems to, you know, went from 5.6 to 6.2 when we implemented it at Vernon Hills, and now we fully implemented at Libertyville and goes from 6.2 to 10.8. Why the increase of 4.6? There is also where we identified that our students need help in three key areas, math, English, and science, and so we have, we have created these lab resource areas for our students, and we have, we will staff those lab areas. Our recommendation is to staff those lab areas with a combination of certified staff and then also support staff to help our students. That model's similar to what some of the other schools are doing in the area, whether it's Nutria or Grayslake or Stevenson. We already have resource areas with teachers during duties, but we feel that's enough, and we need more for our students. And so that's why that PAWS number has increased over the years. And so next year would be full implementation of the PAWS.
I also want to comment, and I think Brian touched on it, but the 9.7 change and increase in the classroom, a large number of that is the co-teaching sections where we were counting to biology teachers, to, we were counting all of that, even though they were playing the role of an interventionist, we were counting it in the classroom FTE, because that's just what we did before. But now that we're trying to really clearly denote how we're using our resources to support students, we're trying to say, no, here are all of the ways we're doing tier-one instruction, and all of those FTE should be general classroom instruction. Anything that's in addition to that, PAWS or interventionist or something like that, that would be categorized as tier-two, where we've identified students who need additional instruction. We want to make sure we're monitoring that so we can show, yes, we are increasing our investment into the students who need that support the most. So we would have predicted for two reasons that classroom FTE would have gone down this year. One, we have fewer students. Two, we have FTE that had been categorized as departmental FTE, we're now moving it to the intervention. Again, the teachers who were doing the work, many of them are now going to be doing similar kind of math intervention or reading intervention in the PAWS program. But it's, we would have predicted this particular numbers change based on how we're trying to grow our intervention model.
And in looking at, you know, going back to the FTE classroom change, it is, you know, a large number has gone down according to that change. We have had the decreasing enrollment. This year is, going into next year, is the second year that we utilize the same optimums that we did last year, and so where all of our classes have the optimums of 25. And when we look at the data from first semester of this year at LHS, we sectioned 11.8% of the sections over optimum. At optimum, we're 28.6, and under optimum, 59.5%. And then Vernon Hills, over optimum was 11.2%, at was 22%, and under at 66%. So I believe that, you know, last year, coming into this year, we didn't, we honored our optimums, and we did the same principles in planning for next year. So we took those same optimums and sectioned the same way. So I'm, you know, we'll run those numbers again next year and see how that played out, but that's what we, you know, fell at this year. When we're looking at, going down the list, special services, instructional co-teaching, a slight increase of .4, and again, that's due to probably some changes in the co-teaching, transition pathways, no change in our FTE. Non-instructional assignments, so our non-instructional assignments are equity coaches, instructional coaches, also our freshman transition programs, link crew here, freshman transition at Vernon Hills, with the smaller freshman class at Vernon Hills, that's why there's a decrease of .1. So none of the other positions were changed, it was just that freshman transition program. Student services are LST, so your counselors and social workers, no change there. Special services, non-instructional, an increase of .5. That's a speech pathologist increase, and then also includes the .4 FTE for hearing itinerant, which was a take-back services. So it, you know, it costs us more money, so we're reflecting the FTE change, but it was a zero FT because we were contracting that out before. Transition pathways, and then an increase of .2, and again, that was speech pathology. So then if we scroll down to our total FTE, again, we've tried to break everything out. So classroom FTE, a decrease of 9.7, but the classroom FTE, so intervention and services increasing by six, non-classroom FTE increasing by .6, so a decrease of 3.1 FTE. And then we also tried to incorporate an additional contingency request of 1.0. This past summer, we did use 1.2 contingency requests for things that changed over the spring/summer. Administration-wise, there is, if you go back up to EL, you'll see our EL numbers in the past three years have increased in FTE, 4.3, 5.9, 6.9. This past year, we hired an EL department chair that was split between the buildings, and she was teaching two courses and three release time for department chair. With the commute and with the change in the bigger department, we felt that that position, our recommendation is to make it where she is not teaching in the classroom anymore. And so it's really taking .4 teaching from her and increasing it to her administrative duties. So that's that .2 that we split between the buildings, .2 and .2. So Jessica Fernandez would be still split between the buildings.
And I want to remind the board, when we brought this to you a year and a half ago, it is, it's required, once you hit a certain threshold, that you have to have a part-time EL coordinator, and then once you hit the next threshold, we said we would be coming back to you for a full-time. Again, she still will be servicing both buildings, but with this increase, in a few years, we could be coming back again and saying, our numbers now warrant a position at each campus or something like that. But this particular requirement to make sure, just how we have to have oversight of our IEPs, and we have to have administrators who are responsible for implementing those programs, we have to have the same kind of leadership and oversight for our EL program.
So we go to page 2 in our course request and enrollment changes. You can see that there is an enrollment difference of 27 students for Libertyville and 58 students for Vernon Hills. The 58 students at Vernon Hills request resulted in 730 course requests, less course requests. At Libertyville, the 27 less students resulted in only, actually, four course requests more. A little part of that is that Libertyville still has early release and late start options, and there were less students that chose that for next year, so that could be, you know, the difference that they are choosing more classes rather than one of those two options. You could see that our special education students, 16 more projected at Libertyville for next year, 12 at Vernon Hills. Our EL, so 15 more at Libertyville, so that's a 31-student increase over two years. And then at Vernon Hills, 38 more students projected, so that's 71 more students in the last two years at Vernon Hills in the EL program. You could see, we've tried to also look at the history of course requests per student, so you could see that Libertyville is a little less average than Vernon Hills, again, due to the late start, early, late start, early release. So then if you go to the last page, page 3, it shows the history of course requests and FTE. So you could see that this was our largest difference of course requests for the district, that's 700. At Libertyville, yes, there is an increase of 24, but again, if you look at our team teaching now in English, and you look at science and math, the team teaching being eliminated in that, but again, FTE did get put into other areas.
One other thing that's important, because not all of our classes are 25 each, there are, for example, in PE, some of the classes that are the general classes are class sizes of up to 40, where some of the specialty classes are 32. So even students So even students who might have in the past selected some specialty classes at 32, if they change their mind and start switching for different classes, just student choice itself can actually shift the FTE. Um, so it, it, it is more complicated. We're trying to show you the big picture of these numbers. Um, but within departments, there are nuances, similar kinds of things in the music department, where you can have an ensemble of 40, or you could have one of the small group, uh, sections at 22 that's going to generate different kinds of FTE needs.
Any questions on the staffing report before we move to the employment recommendations?
I'll go last.
Okay. I just have a quick question about optimums. Um, I am curious about where we're seeing concentrations or trends of going over optimums. Is there a specific area repetitively within our schools that we're seeing this happen over and over again? Is it particularly core classes that we're going over in our optimums? Is it particularly special ed? Is it particularly electives, APs? PE, what is it exactly? And are they across the board happening kind of everywhere? Or is it, is it something that we can kind of focus in on and maybe address?
I know when we looked at it in the fall, it was fairly across the board. I don't have the report in front of me and I don't know if Brian recalls the details of it. But one of the things that when we talked in detail about optimums before, the idea of an optimum is you plan to have some over the, the set target. Otherwise, it would be a maximum. And when we were at the bargaining table, it was very clear that the board understood that if we were to consider them as maximum, that would be very difficult monetarily. So we try to honor the intent of what we agreed to, saying optimum. So if that optimum is 25, we know there could be one section that's at 26, maybe five at 25 and three or four that are 20, 21 or 22. Because kids move and go over the summer or a kid drops a class and now needs to be put for the counselors to do their job, we have to have that little bit of flexibility. And so we work very hard to honor the idea of optimums. But the plan calls for a small number of sections, excuse me, of sections of classes to be over that in order for the system to work. So we definitely would be very willing to track where is that happening? Um, but when we, since we've been starting to do that, we haven't seen, again, we just started with these new optimums, but we would be very comfortable continuing to report on that.
The, the difference between this year and previous years is that, uh, your AP classes were sectioned at 18 or 22, um, and then other classes at 28. So with everything moving to 25, so I think before there probably were pockets more, maybe with some of the AP at 18 that were sectioned over, um, and, and at 22, whereas the ones that were at 28, um, they weren't as many sectioned over the 28, partly because, again, a classroom, most of our classrooms have 30 desks. So there probably wasn't the number, uh, in there that were. Um, and then, um, dropping down to 25, again, as Denise said, you're going to have some. And again, when we say over the optimum, uh, you know, there's, you know, most of them are one or two. There, yes, there, is there a class that may be three over? Um, the difficulty is when you section, let's say, just for example, let's say there's 100 students that sign up for a class and the optimum's 25. 100 divided by 25 is four. So in everyone's mind, they're saying, hey, there, each class should have 25. The problem is that those students also are choosing other classes, other periods of the day. So there may be one section that has 22 and those three other students may have to go into another one that's 26. So, uh, you know, that is the hardest thing. So we are trying, um, to look at that data and seeing maybe where those trends are in certain classes. Also looking at, um, you know, are there certain classes that we might have move-ins more readily over the summer? And so do we need to add another section just off the bat to start with like an Algebra I or, or something like that? If you have, uh, move-ins in the freshman year or Spanish one. So we do try to accommodate that. Then again, we try that and then over the summer, we added classes over the summer that we needed to. So we are, we are trying our best to ensure that the optimums, you know, are met. But yes, there are cases that, um, and unfortunately, there's a couple of cases where I think it's, it hit one teacher where they had, you know, three classes over the optimum. But then their counterpart may had none over the optimum. So, I mean, that's something we can also look at too, is, is there a teacher that they're teaching three to four classes of the same? So.
I think another thing that impacts that in terms of the optimums is we also look at how this, just because the students sign up for the class, doesn't mean that they stay in the class. And so if you have example, you know, the class reduces by 10% on average as the year or semester progresses, we take that into account too.
I appreciate, you know, that you can't necessarily account for the rhythm of student movement that develops over the course of a semester or a year. Um, I think as a board member and, you know, having concern for various stakeholder groups, I, I like to know just how dire things might seem to one of our stakeholder groups in particular, if we're ever seeming to go over optimums. And what I'm hearing is that it's not this, I mean, it's significant. When you're in a, in a classroom teaching and you hear optimum and that's the number you have in your head and kids come in who you didn't anticipate or it becomes, you know, it starts to affect your workload, it can feel, it can feel like a lot and unbalanced and even unfair. But I, I think it's really important that we stay transparent with those numbers. Exactly how many kids are we talking about? Who is affected? Where are we finding these pockets of maybe, um, like I said, kind of a trend where this is happening repeatedly? Um, and if you are open to providing that information to us, we, I, I know personally, I would really appreciate seeing how that kind of works year to year.
Yeah. And one of the things also that we do with, um, our teacher union after April 15th, we'll provide the sectioning numbers from this year to them. And then October 15th, um, we run our, um, class counts from first semester. And then I share all that information, um, with the union. And then again, um, March 15th, so the end of this week, um, run those reports and, um, for all of our classes and our current enrollment.
I also want to comment that over the last four years, we have added a lot more documentation and transparency of this process. So previously, all of our optimums were sort of, where, who keeps that list? And, and it wasn't really an agreed upon list. We codified that in our last agreement and that was an important move forward so that we were on the same page with the teachers' union about what we felt were legitimate ways to section classes. Um, we also had previously not shared all of the sectioning data. Um, that was something that we started doing last year. Um, we continue to go from very limited access to information to sharing more and more information with staff so that they can understand some of the decisions that are made about staffing. But I do think it's important to remember just how the board members who sat on the negotiating team, this is a very, this is the largest part of our budget. And the, the board, um, made sure that you felt comfortable with these optimums as being in our contract. And as administrators, we are doing our best to adhere to that. But the idea of implementing the contract and making sure that we're using district resources to staff classes, that is an administrative right, that is a board right, that's how we allocate our resources. And we want to continue to inform and partner with the union. But that is not the role of a union would be to decide how many sections of biology we need. Um, so I just want to reiterate that, that we want to communicate and partner. But it, it, for fiscal responsibility, those decisions have to lie with the board and administration.
I, I do have some, I mean, first of all, I know how much effort it took into trying to maintain and retain as many of our positions as we have. And I want to acknowledge that and thank you because this is the first time that we have been sitting here talking about reduction. We've never had to face this. So this is a very different conversation than what we've been, as long, as long as I've been on the board. You know, it's pretty much, it's been pretty stable. And this is the first time and this is a serious, you know, conversation to have. Um, I've always understood the mathematics and the algorithm because we never really had to come to hard decisions like we might have to come to today. And I am struggling, I appreciate, sometimes all of the data is too much data. And I guess in general, I'm having a very hard time understanding, what does this look like for our students? I don't get a picture of what is not being offered, what, what is being eliminated as far as choices? If there's students, I, I don't have a good picture to say that I can support regardless of the union, not supporting our students if we, if they need it. Um, I see these large numbers indicate that we would support a reduction of 3.1 FTEs. And I, and I appreciate you asking, you know, explaining to me so that percentage wise, those classes that would be at optimum or over, you think would be stable or similar to what those percentages are today? Here's what I'm trying to get a picture of that I cannot get just from these numbers. Are we giving our students less? I know we have less students, so I think that is a bigger question. How, what does this look like for our student body, most importantly, and their options?
I think one way to answer that is one of the comparisons that I put in my message to the staff because it can be hard when you're looking at pockets of things. So one of the things I showed was average FTE per course request. And we actually staffed more teachers per course request this year than we have in previous years. It's just different. The other way to look at it, and I know that the union quoted a slightly different percentage, but we're down 3% in student enrollment and down 1% in F, certified FTE. We worked very hard to try and make sure through reallocating and, um, continuing to run as many classes as possible. To, you might've expected 3% down in, in enrollment, 3% down in FTE because of program changes, because of changes in EL, because of our intervention model. That's not what we did. We knew that in order to meet our strategic plan and to do the things that we know are going to support student learning, there were still going to need to be increases beyond what the students' course requests were. So I, I just think when you say, are we harming students? We actually allocated more FTE per student than we did over the last two years. It's just being allocated slightly differently. Bryant also has a little bit of information, just to give you a flavor of some of the courses that we did need to cut, but that we have used the exact same process as we have before in terms of looking at course enrollment, seeing which classes can we combine? We've done that to try and make sure opportunities are still available to students. But if only eight kids sign up for a class and 25 is needed for optimum, those classes, we don't feel fiscally responsible to run.
I guess more, what if it's 59 kids sign up and we can run two? Do we say those nine are not? I, I mean, what if it's, we, it's a class that's going to run, but we're over.
So there are, so there are times that we, um, we take and divide by three in that case and they're small sections, yes. And we, so we don't, we don't remove those students. So like if I. They could, like, it, it just depends on, there are times, there are a couple of sections that the optimum is 25 and the numbers that the number of students, and when we put the number of sections together, they're going to be classes of 18, 19 and 20 possibly because of, you know, just, you know, the way it is. But there are, there were 37 courses this year that we, um, did not offer for next year. A lot of these are same courses that from year to year, we have one student sign up, four students sign up, um, and we, we just can't offer those. And so one of the things we need to look at too is our course offerings is, could we offer these every other year and then get enough students in there to take the course? So those courses, again, we take those students, we try to identify those courses early and then we go and try to get them in other courses so that when we do the sectioning, they're in those numbers of those other courses. So it's not an afterthought that we finished sectioning and now we've got, you know, 50 kids that don't have classes and we need to find a spot for them. The other thing is, we do try to combine some of our courses that are similar in nature. So whether that's accounting one and advanced accounting honors, um, to, rather than, if they were two separate courses, they would not run. They just, there's not enough students. But if we put them together, um, what we call stack or combining, then we can run those course. So there is a list of those courses too. And at Libertyville, there were, um, for next year, we recommended for five of those classes, six, uh, yeah, five of those classes. And then at Vernon Hills, uh, seven of those classes to, I think it's seven, to be combined, to be able to run those. So again, to give opportunity to our students, you know, for those classes. But yes, there are some classes, but the, the number of classes that we didn't recommend to run next year was pretty similar number to what we've had in the past. Um, and again, I think we just need to start looking at some of those and say, you know, can we maybe offer this every other year? And now we'll get students in there taking some of those courses.
One other thing, just to come back to the example that you asked about, um, there are some instances where a certain course might have, let's say, 31 kids and it's 25. And if we split it, it would be really, really small. So based on the nature of the course, we might say, no, we're going to offer one section of that. We, just like we have to limit the number of driver's ed sections. No, this is all we can offer. And then these other kids are going to get moved to not take it as a freshman or something else like that. So there are some of those classes, but those are, those decisions are made in consultation with the whole team, with the principals, the assistant principals, everybody sitting around the table, trying to say, okay. So we look at our FTE as a very precious resource. How can we make sure that we're using teacher FTE to positively impact the greatest number of students possible? So there probably were a few classes where we didn't think we could afford to run two sections of, if we had 28 kids, two sections of 14, we couldn't afford that. So we might say, you know what? We're going to have the juniors and seniors take this and the sophomores who can take it next year. Those, that's going to be how we're going to, um, cap this class so that we're being fiscally responsible. And that is something we've done for ages and ages.
To me, it comes back down to how we are supporting our students. And to say to me that we have a reduction of students of 3%, but we continue to support a reduction of FTEs of 1%, geez. Uh, I mean, that's a good figure. Yeah.
It, it needs to be closer. They can turn it down if it's.
Sorry. Yeah. That's, um, I mean, this is a hard decision. This is something that we've never, you know, we knew it was coming. We've been hearing it. Um, and I appreciate the effort.
I really appreciate you saying that. You know, Dan and I were looking back through some of our memos of previous years about anticipating this enrollment decline and that there would be a point at which it was also going to be accompanied by FTE decline. Um, it is hard now that we're at the table where that's a reality. But I also want to remind you that in the past, we have had reductions in different departments over the last four years, I've, three years I've been at this table. We've just had retirements or other areas where we've been able to absorb it. We only have one and a half teachers retiring this year. So some of the things that we normally have to absorb these ups and downs in FTE, they're gone this year. Um, we'll have a very large number of people retiring the following year.
I was going to say, are they coming back next year?
Yes. Um, but again, that was one of the things, why we worked so hard to try and minimize the number of teachers we needed to release because we want to keep those good teachers. Um, we did everything we could to maintain as many teachers as possible.
If you look at our retirements for this year, uh, we have our art teacher retiring and our certified nurse here at Libertyville, that's it. So two, uh, staff, next year we have 11 teachers that are retiring, the following year 10. And then the following year, another, um, I think, uh, I had 14, 13 or 14. So the next three years combined are a, a lot of retirement. So, you know, like if you look back a few years, we did have a decrease in FTE, uh, one year of three, but we didn't, you know, with, normally that would have just been absorbed with retirements and we didn't have that retirement. and we didn't have that retirement.
So it's important to know that we have faced decreases in FTE in previous years. It's just we had the retirements to be able to account for those.
Or, or there have been programmatic changes that increased FTEs. So the net change is not negative.
Correct.
I just wanted to hit on the history that Denise mentioned. So three years ago, our enrollment projecting at around 3,100 is not a surprise. Three years ago, we knew it was heading towards this and this is exactly where we are. So the enrollment being down shouldn't be a surprise. And you're right, if enrollment projected is down around 3%, we're looking, based on 300 teachers, three down, that's about a 1% change. This is an example of when we were talking through our financial projections. Oh, there's two things. One, our annual, our annual surplus is not enough to keep us, to keep our fund balance at a, at a healthy percentage. That needs to increase. And five years from now, we've got a projection that doesn't look very favorable in terms of what a deficit could look like in five years. And so what I told you, what I told you was, small changes now can have big impacts five years from now and do that. This is an example of a change, and I know small can be relative. This is an example of a change that will have an impact on that number five years from now. So that if you, this is an example of things to do. So if you don't do things like this, I'm just saying that makes something in the future more real.
Thanks. This is all very helpful. I just wanted to add, and I think I've, so I'm, I'm in the corporate world where we are constantly dealing with reductions in force. And one of the things we always try to do before you eliminate someone's job is see can they fit in some other opening? So with that context, I was thinking, you know, if you look at the next FNF presentation, we have a lot of really good work happening in the strategic plan. That's going to require a lot of people to make that successful. We've heard some feedback here that there's too much going on even right now. So one of the questions I had is, knowing that there is an increase in upcoming work, people feeling maybe like they have too much happening right now, can these resources, can the 3.1, I think, 1, 3.7, 3.1 be utilized to support any future strategic plan objectives? That was kind of a question I had, but I also realized in, in this, when it comes to teachers and staffing, you have to be credentialed enough to be able to do certain work. You cannot just take people from A and B and have them, have them learn on the job like you could in, in where I live. So I just wanted to see if you could provide some thoughts on, can you use these folks for, for any additional or futuristic type of work that we have on our plate? Or is that something you've already looked at and you've done the best match possible?
Well, I'm going to comment on one and then I want Dan to talk about the financial, like the, he's encouraging us that this is a small change budgetarily we need to make. But the other thing is about credentials. I want to share an example. In areas where the classroom FTE went down, let's say in English, we didn't have enough English sections to offer to all of the teachers who are currently employed. One of the things we said is what else can some of those teachers teach? Many of them are ESL endorsed. We are going up in ESL. So we were able to reassign some of those teachers to ESL because that is part of their endorsement area and not have to release them. So we, that would be an example of within the constraints of someone's endorsement where we did exactly what you would have wanted us to do. So a lot of the things that you're imagining, gee, I wonder if they tried this. Please trust us. I mean, this year's schedule is a very good schedule. We built that last year. Right now, we're building next year's schedule and it's going to be a very good schedule. And we're trying to show you with this data that we are aligning to optimums, that we are aligning to the things that you've said big picture wise are important to decision making. About the repurposing, I want Dan to comment on.
So part of what you're saying, Sunal, is correct that high schools are a little bit different than maybe elementaries. You can't easily just place people in different departments. It's not like there's a, just an overall certification for the grade level and they can be interchanged. It's very, very much content specific. To, to answer the first question you asked, can you, can you repurpose and do stuff, have them do other things? The answer is yes. If the goal of the board, you're, you're the board, you, you, you're deciding these. If the goal of the board is to not decrease FTE for any reason, whatever the, good reason, bad reason, whatever, then you don't have to decrease FTE. That isn't necessarily going to match your ability to pay for it. So at the end of the day, what I'm saying is, the way that our big picture is and where it is right now and where it is heading, our ability to fund the positions that we have with raises and do all the other things, implement the strategic plan, I don't see enough dollars to make it all work. And looming is something five years out that I, I want to prevent. Like, so I, I was in those rooms, right? No one is excited about this. No one, no one is excited about this. I have lived through in a previous district, having to write an honorable dismissal of a tenured teacher because of money. I lived through that. Since then, it has been my personal mission to never let a district be in that position again. This is different. This is related to students and enrollment. But, but we, we had to do that just because there wasn't enough money to pay for it. We had the students. We had the students. It was a great teacher. There just wasn't enough money to do it. I never want to let that happen. So if you don't look at things like this, this will make our future harder and harder to do. You could be, so me, and I'm not trying, my intention is not to scare you. I'm trying to be honest about what I see. If you don't do something like this now, when there is rational and reasonableness connected to these numbers, you will very likely be forced to make changes when the numbers don't make sense. You could be in a situation where, wow, our enrollment is up, but we don't have the money to fund positions. So either we're going to have to stay with what we have or we have to reduce when even numbers are up. That's going to be even more difficult. We are trying, I'm trying my best to help guide and foresee that we don't get into that position. Because I, I don't want that, I don't, I don't want us to be in that position. I don't think anybody wants to be in that position. So that's just a little context in terms of, to try to answer your question.
Thank you.
So the question I have is sort of related to that. And that is, I know as we're doing sectioning and we're looking at who can teach what and, and where we might move things around, in this puzzle, we have some areas that are increasing. We have some areas that are decreasing in FTE. Is there a way to get a picture of what the impact of that is? In other words, of those ones that are increasing, how many of the, the, the ones where we're decreasing, fit into the, the increase? If you follow what I mean, like how many new teachers? Because we don't have enough credentialed FTE for those programs, are we hiring versus, how many are we reallocating versus how many are we actually no longer hiring?
Yeah, I, I think I know what you're asking. So if you look at, we have a retirement in art. And so we need to hire an art teacher. And the only other hire at the moment is a point two in, I think in business. And, and so that's our, like, for us to, you know, that's all we're hiring because we have, we have allocated, I think, everybody in positions that, you know, we have.
Yeah, that was, that was basically my question.
Yeah, so it's, so it's not like this action's going to happen and I'm going to go post six jobs tomorrow or, you know, next week. That's, that's not the case.
At the same time, we're reducing in other places. So we've been able to find-
Correct.
And not only would we do that because we think it's the right thing to do, contractually, we're obligated to assign teachers job for, jobs in sections for which they're qualified.
Sure.
So we would do it because it's good and also because we're required to.
Yes. Thank you.
And knowing that we are moving towards our heterogeneous grouping next year and our interventions that we have planned in the PAWS and in LAB, we are taking in 3.4 position total, is that right? To staff PAWS to support interventions? Am I reading that right? Going from 6.2 to 10.6 in PAWS in both the Vernon Hills and the LHS?
So 6.2 is our current to 10.8 next year? So 4.6?
Oh, 4.6. So, and is that coming from some of our displaced teachers?
Yes.
And then?
Yeah, we're not, yeah, and, and that, in that FTE of that 10.8, that's all of our teachers. That's our current staff.
And you don't foresee us needing more FTEs to support an intervention, knowing that we're doing this curricular change? Or program change of heterogeneous grouping? You think that, you feel like that'll be sufficient?
So that was based off of the recommendation of the number of students. So just like our other classes where we have students enrolled in a class, these numbers are based off of the number of recommended students in there.
For PAWS, the lab model is more of an MTSS where we won't know. Again, remember, and when we described it, the PAWS is based on test scores and recommendations and students are placed in the full period intervention. So they will be targeting below grade level standards, prerequisite skills. The lab model will be different. It will be only a half period opposite lunch, so a student will not need to give up a lunch period. We designed it that way so we wouldn't negatively impact FTE. This was a way to make sure we still were giving targeted intervention, but that kids still could sign up for electives. That's a very important part of that part of the model. So that particular one will have both teacher and support staff. That will be more at grade level standard. So the people who are truly experts in their area needing a full period, those are all certificated teachers in areas. That's the PAWS model. The lab model is where it's students who, they've, no significant gaps in previous, they're just having a hard time grasping whatever the current grade level instruction.
Supplement to a tier one intervention?
Yes.
As opposed to PAWS being considered a tier two intervention?
In our model right now, I think we are considering, because we're going to use data and assign kids, we're considering the lab almost like a 2A in terms of tier two and 2B, meaning much more intense, but because it's a full period. So again, it's, it's our first attempt to use data to place students more specifically into some of these interventions. So we feel this is a really good place to start. We know that, that we could end up having too much in one area and not enough in another. And that's why we're going to be gathering data to monitor. I mean, we have a very clear plan. How many students are we referring? How many students are actually attending? How many students are growing from the different interventions that we're going to be running?
I mean, because we've always been talking about this throughout, talking about heterogeneous, you know, how are we going to support the students? Because this is going to be a different model for them. And I, there's a part of me, and I'm, I'm taking my own cap away and not, but this is going to be new. And I want to make sure we're supporting our students in this new program change with the best people that we can support them with. And if, and, and as long as we're open to understanding, maybe this isn't working and being able to pivot if it's not. I mean, I think it's a good place to start, but it being open to the possibility of possibly needing to pivot. Because this is going to be a big change. And we're all in it to support our students. I know I am, and I'm looking forward to seeing how this, I have a, you know, I'm-
I do think it's, it is a change for us, but I just want to remember that when the kids are transitioning from eighth grade, they are all learning, the eighth grade has honors and the eighth grade has general eighth grade curriculum. So when they come to us, they're transitioning in a very similar way to what they're used to. It's more different for us. We put them into three separate levels. They weren't in three levels in the middle school.
No, but I know what that intervention looks like even in the middle school. And that intervention, even for those kids that are in that, you know, general, general ed is usually done by a certified staff, you know.
And will you remind us, I'm sorry, were you finished? I don't want to interrupt you. Will you remind us why we had to take a step back and reexamine our co-teaching? And really why we're approaching this in a different way?
Right. So the, the adjustment that we're making to go from some, I would call them segregated classes, because we had classes that were violating the 70-30 rule according to ISBE, where we were identifying them as general education classes, but more than 30% of the students had an active IEP. You can have that, but it has to be considered an in-program class. So we weren't, it wasn't truth in advertising. So one of the things that we knew we needed to do was to distribute our students differently. It wasn't about putting more adults in the room. It was about saying, if it's a general education class, there can't be more than 30% of the students who have IEPs. So that's the driving force behind heterogeneous classes. We still are going to staff with excellent teachers. We're still going to have PAWS. We're still going to have LAB. But it's much more about the peer group with which the students are learning. We also shared data with you last spring to show that three years of placement in our team teaching classes was not doing the intervention that we were hoping it would. Very good intentions among the teachers, but when we looked at the three-year cohort data, we saw pretty flat kinds of achievement where we would be hoping if we were paying for two teachers' salary to do those interventions, that we would be seeing that gap close. So because of looking at the data to see was our current model effective, the answer was no. And looking at the state guidelines that were saying, can you place this really highly concentrated group of students who have needs in one classroom and still call it a general education classroom? The answer was no. So we don't have a choice to do heterogeneous classes or not. That's the expectation for high schools across the state of Illinois. What we have a choice in is making sure that we're supporting students who are in that learning environment and that we're supporting teachers for whom this will be a slightly different experience, a broader range of students than what they've worked with in the past.
But I want to make sure that I'm clear, because I, we've had this conversation so many times. Not only is it for compliance with our CO-TOD and our IEP students, but we saw that our striving learners were not making, were not closing the gap.
Correct.
And not only were they not closing the gap, the gap was widening. So we, but we also, because we had this conversation, found that the scope and sequence of what they were getting in that class was not the same as what was happening in a college, in the college prep class. So now we're taking these students, if I understand, now we're taking those traditional students who were not even getting the same amount of scope and sequence, and still the gap was widening and putting them in. And I know they're going to be successful. I, I know. But I can see we are now expanding their scope and sequence. Our expectations are they're going to meet these benchmarks. And we've always been saying, what, what are we going to do to support them? I'm, I'm leaving it to you. I mean, I, I understand the numbers. And that's why I'm having a hard time picturing, what does this look like in practice? Because I know they're going to need support with that much change that is going to be good change. And are we giving them the best support? And these numbers look, I, I'm willing to say, I, I know you've done, I can buy in, you've done the research, so I can support that as long as we can say if we are keeping records and it's not working, we pivot. And we are open to saying we need more, especially at the beginning of this transition.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm concerned about class sizes in the heterogeneous classes. Like those are the ones that I would absolutely say we are not going to go over. You know, I look at the numbers, 11% or over 28% are on and 59% are under. I wonder about how under is under and how over is over. Like, are we at 25.5 or are we at 27 when we say over? Can you answer that? Do you know?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, no.
Could you guess? Like, is it?
Do you mean the average class size?
Yeah.
It's like 17.9?
No, I mean, I mean for a class that's in that 11% that's over, the, the optimum?
It's not a class, those are individual sections. So you might- So you might have.
Oh, you're saying those, okay, go ahead.
11% of the sections.
Okay.
Not of the classes.
Yeah.
So for example, if I have 10 ninth grade biology classes, there could be two of them, well, let's not use the science, well, let's just go ahead. 24 is the maximum for science. There could be two of them that are over, that have 25 kids. Look, because we had some move-ins and they have to complete their freshman. We can have two of them that are right at 24. All the rest of them could be under. That would be the proportion that Bryant is referencing. So it's not all of the courses, it's sections are. And again, that's because we're trying to make sure kids have access to graduation requirements. Again, a kid moves in, the only time we can fit them in is eighth period biology. Or they're, they then become behind graduation requirements. We're going to put that kid in that 25th seat, knowing, even though we know periods, periods 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, there might be a seat open, it can't work for that kid because of maybe some other graduation requirements. So that's the kind of nuance that we're talking about. The average class size for biology, there might be 22.5, but there still might be one or two sections that are over the optimum.
And I, I worked with optimums. I, that's, my whole career was, was based on that. We didn't have a maximum. And I understand why maximums are an issue. I feel that we are getting a, an honest effort to try to keep those at our optimums. And those numbers indicate this. That, that we are, we're managing that. I did ask the question earlier today about, is there a possibility that we could take a look at those heterogeneous classes? And if there's any way that we can keep those numbers down?
Please know that we sectioned that way.
Okay. So you already did that. All right, fantastic, thank you. And then really, all the other questions that I had, you have answered so far. So I, I talked to the principals today. I did the lunch today. And both of them were, I think that they felt that they had very honestly approached sectioning. And that they both felt that they had very difficult jobs to try and manage all of the pieces. So I, I'd just like to say to the, to the principals and to the, to the buildings that I appreciate that that is hard work. And it's, it's difficult when you have fewer students. And so I, I think that we're going to see this again. But hopefully with natural attrition, we'll be able to kind of ride that curve. And I hope it won't be as bad as this year. But I don't have any other questions.
I only had one more, when we talked about retirements. And I just, again, I'm going to start with, I know that you've made every effort to try to save, because we all value all of our faculty and staff. But if we are facing so many retirements next year, that you said we're going to have several, are we in a position? Are we going to be sitting, looking for teachers next year that we could retain for one year to fit a purpose with all those retirements? To fulfill spots that we know are coming next year? Or do we see us having the same kind of decline in enrollment that we're going to be having this conversation again? And that?
Well, we know we're going to have decline in enrollment. I mean, that's from Dan's enrollment projection, we know that.
Even next year?
Even next year, for the next four years, straight declining enrollment. The challenge is, we, we don't know how the students are going to ask for courses. Like, I wouldn't have predicted that one of our areas of decline was PE. I mean, that is something that is, students take it, but the proportion at which, so it has to be a combination of which courses they picked and the number of students who are enrolling in PE, which is a four-year graduation requirement. So there are some areas that are impacted a little bit more than others, because it's really connected to, you have to take a certain number of classes. And there's others that are elective-based. Even a class where you have to take a certain number to graduate, kids take more of those things sometimes. Like, kids take more math classes right now. There's more sections of math than there are English, even though we're required to take English for years. So there's just some anomalies in the way our students request courses, that it would be difficult for us to say, okay, so we're going to hold back staff in this area, knowing there's a retirement where it could be a very different need that we're seeing next year in terms of attrition.
Yeah, I just don't want to, you know, cut off our nose to spite our face if we know that we're going to have these vacancies coming. But if you've already looked at that.
Okay. And agenda-wise, we're continuing on with the annual certified staff employment recommendations.
So the, so the next piece of, after you finish sectioning and staffing, is then that you, as a board, at the next meeting, will have to make some decisions on the people and our teachers. And so we have had individual conversations with those teachers that are affected. And then, you know, they will get official notices also in the mail and also hand-delivered. So there's a couple of things. Number one, you have your returning teachers, so first-year teachers, second-year teachers returning, and then third-year teachers returning. Some of those second and third, third-year teachers will also be receiving tenure, and some of the second-year teachers will be receiving tenure. Then you, by law, you have your part-time teachers. This year, we had eight part-time teachers. By law, you release all of your part-time teachers. Out of those eight, five will be then asked back at the April board reading. So out of those eight, there were three that, they were part-time from, you know, point three, they're all about point three FTE. And those three, unfortunately, with the decline, they did not have positions to come back to. The other is the honorable dismissal of full-time faculty. So there's a couple of different sections in the dismissal of full-time faculty. Two of our full-time faculty that you're taking action on releasing actually just covered a one-year leave of absence. And so they, they filled a leave of absence for psychologists. Actually, one at Libertyville and one at Vernon Hills. So they knew that was coming, but we are taking formal action because they were hired full-time. So that's two of those employees. The other one is a teacher that, again, decreased in FTE, and we do not have a position for them. Then there were three employees that are full-time this year that we are, have to take formal action to release them to part-time status. So there were three full-time, then also that will be reduced to part-time status.
Release them and then hire them back part-time?
So you, we're just doing it all in one action. So if they're full-time, we're just taking all of that action on the honorable dismissal next week. So our recommendation is that the three of them would be full-time down to part-time. And then again, if there are any increases, spring, summer on those, they have rights to those positions. And look at those. And again, these are difficult decisions, I think, for, you know, all of us. You know, and having the difficult decision, the difficult conversations from the department chair and the principals to have those conversations with people. So that is our staffing employment recommendations.
Questions? All right, moving on to employment of employees, item G.
This is our personnel report for, that would go onto the, recommendation to go onto the consent agenda for the board reading.
Questions? All right, on to item H, educational tours.
I do want to highlight that we are, we do have, again, we had two certified staff retirements, but we do have two admin retirements. And so two of those replacements are being recommended. Actually, one is Jennifer Getch, who's our current oral languages department chair. She's being recommended to the assistant principal for student services, replacing Ollie Stevens. And then Lauren Casman from Lake Zurich is being recommended to replace Paul Reef, who's retiring from English. So those are on recommendations.
Thank you.
Okay, item H, educational tours.
We have three educational tours. You can see them, LHS Distributive Education Club of America to nationals, Vernon Hills Math Team to state, and the Vernon Hills Outdoor Adventure Club to Wisconsin.
That one sounds like fun.
I've gone on it before, it is.
Yeah, I think camping's good. I do walk normally along the path back here, and I did see that the fireplaces were smoldering the other day, so they must have been doing their outdoor cooking, which I think is fantastic.
Very fun unit.
Any questions about educational tours? Okay, moving on. Item I, equal opportunity schools update.
Well, good evening. This evening, I am going to send to you on some of the course enrollment updates that we have coming up for the 2024, 2025 school year. These updates were put in place based on information that we have received as a district, that you have reviewed as a board, recommendations that have been made, and changes that are being put in place. And so it really started off by examining our data profile and looking at who's being placed where when it comes to course enrollment and course placements. And then where do we see disproportionate representation in that course placement process across our district? And we've answered questions like, what were the barriers that are limiting access to our course enrollment process? And so we're really pleased with the work that our staff has put in.
Can we turn his mic up? Because I don't think everybody can hear.
Can you move it closer, Larry?
All right. How about now?
Better.
All right.
And so has resulted in modifications and enhancements to our course enrollment process. And, and really what the goal is, is to push all students to stretch and grow to their full potential. So in this presentation tonight, we're going to be looking at three of those initiatives that are going to be rolled out across the district in the 24, 25 school year. And as we look at each one of those initiatives, really clarify what is happening there, giving you an overview of the initiative, sharing why, the rationale for the change in that particular area, how that initiative is going to be implemented and supported throughout the year, looking at who is going to be impacted by that, by the initiative, and what that impact will be for each one. So currently, we have the following course levels in District 128. Our accelerated course levels include our AP dual credit and our Honors Capstone classes. Then we have our college preparatory level, where we have our college prep, where there's one Gen A teacher. We have our CO-TOD, where there's one Gen A and one spare teacher. And then we have TEAM TOT, where there's one Gen A teacher and another Gen A teacher supporting students, which is considered one of our Strive and Learner courses. And then we have Strive and Learner courses that have just one Gen A teacher. And then in our special education program, we have our in-program students. And so changing in 2024, 2025 is really the TEAM TOT and Strive and Learner sections will all become a part of college preparatory. There will be no changes to our accelerated course level or our special education course level. And with this change with TEAM TOT and Strive and Learner, it's really because we believe that when provided with effective and appropriate supports, that every student can and will learn when we give them the supports that they need. And we want to do that in a more heterogeneous environment, because research has shown us, and our own data has demonstrated, that when students are kept in a homogeneous setting, that they get tracked there for the course of their matriculation in high school, very often not leaving the remedial section, and that the data indicates that there's no real improvement in their achievement. And so for 2024, 2025, these are the three areas that we will have initiatives running and beginning. And we think that these three things really work in concert with one another to promote our academic identity of students, to promote grit, which is the perseverance of effort, to support a growth mindset, where we really believe that intelligence can grow with hard work, and to support our students' self-efficacy, so that they can believe in their ability to learn. And so when we look at our heterogeneous classes work, it's really going to focus on our college prep sections and our college prep CO-TOD sections. Our work with equal opportunity schools will support advanced placement and dual credit. And then our accelerated placement policy will support, will support advanced placement, dual credit, and honors. So those are the sections that we talked about earlier, and how each one of those initiatives supports them. So let's get into the meat of it, starting with accelerated placement. What is it? All right, accelerated placement really is Illinois legislation, and is required for all districts to implement. And what it specifies is that each district must have an accelerated placement policy that allows for the automatic enrollment in the following school term of a student into the next most rigorous level of advanced coursework if the student meets or exceeds state standards. And we look at our state standards using the SAT and PSAT data. But what does it mean when they talk about the next most rigorous level of advanced coursework? So a student this year may be enrolled in a college prep class. And by analyzing their SAT or PSAT data, and they have met or exceeded the benchmark in either ELA, math or science, then they will be automatically enrolled in an honors section for that subject in the next year. Now, I may be a student who I'm currently in an honors class. And I also have met or exceeded the standard in those areas, then I would be enrolled in an advanced placement or a dual credit section for that subject in the next year when it's available. If we don't have an AP course for that particular subject, then I will remain in the honors level. It's always keeping the student at the highest level of rigor that we have available. And then finally, if I am an advanced placement or a dual credit student, and I am already enrolled in that, that level, and I meet or exceed, then I continue to be in the advanced placement or dual credit level for that next year. So that's what, really understanding that next most rigorous level of advanced coursework looks like.
Mr. Varn, can I just clarify? If a student or their parents do not want them moved up, they may remain in the same level that they took the previous year. Is that correct?
That is correct. A student and, and/or their family can have a discussion and decide that they do not wish to accept the enrollment. And in many cases, that may be a healthy choice for students who may meet or exceed in all of those areas. And so we certainly want our students to be well-rounded and have a balanced life, and we promote health and wellness for our students. And part of that is making a, a decision around what can we handle as our academic, academic load.
Can I interrupt also? We already have a policy, the accelerated placement policy 6135, and it's been on our books for a long time. It hasn't gone in just because of this law, is that correct?
We did update that policy.
We updated it, but it's been a part of?
It went, when the law went in, we put 6135.
Okay.
I don't think we had.
Yeah, that was a few years ago, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like it's been in there for a while, even though it's just now that we're.
We just adopt.
So the public act was enacted in spring of 2021, and then you had time to.
Right.
So then we put the policy in place in '23.
Okay.
We just adopted it last spring.
Right. And then updated. Well, all of them now say 2024, because we updated all of our policies in one at once. So we'd have to go back to a previous one to know when those other adoptions were. But my question is, is this a significant departure from what we're already doing? Like, if you had a freshman biology student who is doing exceptionally well, wouldn't that teacher already, like, just as a matter of the way we do business over the years, say, you might want to stretch and go into an accelerated class next year? Like, are we going to see a big difference in movement of students as a result of this law?
We, we have seen increases in the number of students enrolling in or making diagonal movements based on, on the implementation of this. And so the intent of the, of the act really was to expand access, opportunities for advanced learning. And when we talk about advanced learning, we're talking about advanced placement, dual credit, and Honors Capstone courses. So when, when you hear for the rest of the duration of the presentation talking about advanced coursework or advanced classes, it encaps, it encapsulates all of those areas. it encapsulates all of those areas. And then also, Mr. Carmichael, I think that it really does resonate with us as a district, because although the state of Illinois has required this as a new mandate, when we began meeting and talking about our data and creating our strategic plan, one of the areas in our equity and inclusion strategic plan goals required an audit and revision of the course recommendation placement process with an outcome of adopting this policy. But this work really, while the legislation accelerated that work for us, it was in full alignment with the direction that the district was going in already. And so for 2024-2025, our students have been enrolled in courses based on the SAT and PSAT data. This is the single test that we use to enroll students, because it's the single point of data that was available to us at this particular time. As we move forward in the implementation of accelerated placement as a district, we will include multiple data points that will include our STAR assessment and our PSAT, or whatever state assessment is available to us. And we are in alignment with the law with doing that. And so who is impacted by this? It's really all students, no matter what grade they're in, unless they are graduating senior. Students who had to complete course requests and course registration, any student who met that benchmark was enrolled in the next level of advanced coursework. Now, students not meeting that benchmark are enrolled in our college prep level courses. And so the impact has been an increase at both schools for AP enrollment, as well as honors and dual credit enrollment. And so what that looks like in terms of numbers is at Libertyville High School, for AP enrollment, we see 150 more students being assigned, being enrolled in advanced placement sections. At Vernon Hills High School, 121 more students in the 2024-2025 school year than currently. Similarly, we have more students being enrolled in our honors and dual credit courses. And at Libertyville High School, we have 91 more students being enrolled, and at Vernon Hills High School, 86 more students being enrolled. So overall, we do see more students than our current numbers enrolled in our advanced courses.
Can I ask you a question, Dr. Varn? Of those percentages, how many are new students that never took an AP or an honors class? How many new... Of that percentage, what are students that had, you know, I'm assuming this is reflective of some students who are taking multiple honors and multiple APs, because the goal is to pull our kids along. So how many new students are meeting the next most rigorous level?
These numbers are individual students, so it doesn't, this percentage isn't counting a student multiple times in the number.
Okay.
At the Accelerated Placement Act, these would be, these would all be students who... At the Accelerated Placement Act, all of these students have met or exceeded the benchmark. We did not disaggregate this particular data by students who are new to that particular level at this time. Later, when we talk about EOS, we do have that data from EOS.
Okay, I'm sorry then.
And speaking of EOS, let's move right along. So what is it? Right, so EOS works in concert or in conjunction with our APA, but it is targeted towards a specific group of students. And those students are our students of color and our low-income students, because nationwide, we see that these students are disproportionately represented in our AP and advanced-level coursework, dual credit, across the nation. We also saw that data reflected in our D128 data profile. And so Equal Opportunity Schools has partnered with us to support us in identifying high-potential, underrepresented students to enroll in these advanced-level coursework. And they look at it through a more holistic evaluation of each student. When we talked about the Accelerated Placement Act, we talked about looking at test data and test performance only. Equal Opportunity Schools looks at more than just that, and we'll explain, I'll explain that in more detail shortly. And so why? In our Board Policy 712, it requires that the district monitor and report on access to participation in and success in upper-level and AP courses, and include the frequency of diagonal placement moves from leveled classes. So earlier, you asked the question of how we would be tracking this data. It's already in our policy that we would track this data, and I'm the person to report on it for you. And so, looking at how many of our students are moving, and then what is the success of those students? So what happens when they get placed in that higher level will be reported to us as we track and monitor that data. Another reason why, it goes back to our strategic plan goals, which we talked about, the audit and the revision of course recommendation process. Equal Opportunity Schools supports that goal as well. And so how? We are in phase one of our partnership. During this phase, we have had an opportunity to examine data that we collected through our student and staff survey to allow us to formulate a list of targeted students to outreach as we attempt to increase our diversity in advanced-level coursework. And so through their recommending strategies for encouraging students to enroll in advanced courses, we tracked students as they went through course selection to see how many of those students actually registered in an advanced-level course. And then we will be creating a support plan that outlines how students and staff are going to be supported as more students participate in these advanced-level courses. This list that I talked about was generated for us by EOS, and the criteria that they utilized were students demonstrating an interest in an advanced course through that survey that they took. Then students had to have a GPA of 2.0 or higher and meet one of the following two criteria. Either they had to demonstrate strong academic self or one other asset on the survey. And when we talk about strong academic self, we're talking about these items here: academic identity, leadership, focus, grit, growth mindset, and purposeful learning, or self-efficacy. In addition to demonstrating these qualities, they may also have received two or more teacher recommendations. So with the 2.0 GPA, having one and/or of these two bullets underneath. Then our schools took that list that was provided to us from EOS, and we created our targeted list. And we took the following criteria and applied it to the students that were on the outreach list from EOS: students who had never taken an advanced-level course, and students who had expressed interest in taking that course, and they had at least one teacher recommendation. From that, we were able to generate a list of students who we would target specifically to take our advanced-level coursework. Then we worked with our, we worked with our department chairs to provide trusted adult training to all faculty members. All staff who participated in the trusted adult training. Through the survey, students identified individuals in the school building who they trust have a relationship with and identified as their trusted adult. These students who were on the targeted outreach list were then approached by that trusted adult and/or counselor. If they did not identify a trusted adult, the counselor was the default. But the trusted adult had a conversation with the student to encourage them to take an advanced course. And then we also had breakfast at each school with these targeted students to share with them information about advanced coursework and the benefits of taking these advanced courses. And so at Libertyville High School, we identified 73 students who had never taken an AP course, who were students of color or and/or low-income students. And at Vernon Hills High Schools, we identified 109. After our outreach, 49 of those 73 students at Libertyville enrolled in an advanced course, and 54 at Vernon Hills enrolled in an advanced course. And so of the students that we talked about earlier, the 150 students who would be taking, who have been added to taking an AP class, of the 150 students, 49 at LHS are low-income students of color, representing 33%. And then at Vernon Hills, 54 students of the 121 students who will be new to AP enrollment are low-income students of color, so that represents 45%. Overall, we're able to see how many students are enrolled in an AP class for next year compared to the students who are currently enrolled. So in blue, that represents for each demographic, we have Asian, Black, Hispanic, Latinx, multiracial, white. Each group, the blues shows us how many, what percent of those students, and how many of those students are currently enrolled in an AP class. The green shows what we anticipate for next year. So at Libertyville High School, in each of these areas, our students of color, our Asian, Black, Hispanic, and multiracial students, and students who meet that criteria and are also low-income, we see they have either maintained the level of enrollment or have increased the level of enrollment for next school year, with overall increasing our low-income and students of color participating in advanced coursework from 57% to 63%. At Vernon Hills, we see some variation. In some areas, our students of color and low-income students have increased. In all, the medium and high are higher. Medium and high-income students, regardless of ethnicity, is higher. But when we look at low-income, we did see some decline in our African-American and Latinx populations. But overall, we still saw an increase of students of color and low-income students enrolling in the AP course. So that's the impact that that has had. Equal Opportunity Schools is an initiative aimed at increasing enrollment, representation in advanced courses. It does support advanced placement, but also identifies advanced coursework.
Accelerated placement.
Oh, I'm sorry, accelerated placement. But also identifies advanced coursework potential by evaluating a range of qualities beyond the test scores. So that's what EOS adds in addition to the accelerated placement. And so it does not impact enrollment in honors or college prep level courses. It's Equal Opportunity Schools is solely about dual credit and advanced placement courses, a highest level of rigor. And it does not impact enrollment in the ninth-grade courses, as these students are current eighth graders and were not a part of any data collection that we had with them. And then our third and final initiative is our heterogeneous classes. And beginning with the class of 2028, we will begin to phase out what we currently know as striving learner sections. This will be an initiative that these students have never been a part of, so they will have never known what a striving learner or a team-taught class is. So this is a new model for students who have no experience in our previous model. It is targeted to this ninth-grade core, these ninth-grade core courses only. And so in 2024-2025, regular ninth-grade course levels will consist only of advanced placement, honors, and college prep options in the regular levels. We will still have our special ed in-program level. The only thing, again, that is impacted is the elimination of team-taught and striving learner sections, only for ninth grade. And so the why behind this? Similar to our AP advanced coursework policy and metrics, the board also included in there that we monitor and report on overrepresentation in special education and remedial or low-level classes. So this is our effort to provide information around that. And then in April of 2022, the board accepted the recommendation from the Equity Leadership Team to continue the exploration of heterogeneous classes in order to increase inclusion for all students. One external driver for us in this is, as we've been talking about, is the Illinois School Code that requires the 70-30 ratio of a student with an IEP that calls for service in a general education classroom must receive that service in a class that is composed of students of whom at least 70% are without IEPs. So we want to make sure that we are in compliance with this particular rule, which we were not when we were having our students homogeneously placed in team-taught and striving learner sections. Another why is because we were looking at the disproportionate representation of students in our lower-level courses. So we're looking for more proportionate representation of our overall demographic with our students who are enrolled in our courses. And so we saw that happening in this striving learner course, and it was one of the drivers that led to the elimination of this. Similar with our low-income. Although our low-income students made up a smaller portion of our overall demographic, there was overrepresentation of that population of students in our striving learner sections. And so we wanted to address that through this work. And how are we doing this? We have a group of ninth-grade teachers who are working to design universally accessible grade level, appropriate core courses. They're engaged in this curriculum redesign process right now to identify effective tier-one interventions for in-class, to develop a curriculum that will be accessible for all students and that everyone in college prep will receive the same guaranteed and viable curriculum. We're also developing an effective inclusive service model to maximize instructional time in classroom for students and provide supports in the general education learning environment for students with IEPs. And then we're also creating our tier-two and tier-three academic interventions that we talked a little bit about earlier. But here are some of those tiered supports. Making sure that we have that curriculum that's aligned to grade-level standards, access to the classroom teacher for assistance and reteaching, also making sure that the MASH and the ARC are available for drop-ins, and creating numeracy and literacy intervention with our PAWS program, the use of varsity tutors to provide online tutoring services out 24/7, and then making sure that we are creating opportunities for students to go to the lab for math, literacy, and science. And this will, is the reallocation of resources from the striving learner model that we had to this heterogeneous model. And so the impact is that rather than students being concentrated in striving learner sections, they're going to be included in the college prep section and receive grade-level instruction alongside all their peers. So no longer isolating them. So just to clarify, we're talking about three things: accelerated placement, equal opportunity schools, and heterogeneous classes. These are all three separate initiatives targeting specific groups of students. The goal, though, of each of them is to increase student access to appropriately rigorous coursework. Advanced-level courses, honors-level courses, and college prep sessions will continue to exist in D128 scheduling. And any student interested in more advanced coursework is encouraged to enroll. Our goal here is to really provide more access to students to get to these classes, even if the student is not identified by accelerated placement. They are not on our equal opportunity schools list, but the student has decided that they want to challenge themselves in that way. We want to be able to provide the support and the opportunity for them to do that. And so these three initiatives, although separate, all work in harmony with one another to create opportunities for students to have access to rigor. Any questions?
I guess the, thank you. This was an excellent presentation. The flip side of the question that I asked about a student or their parents being able to opt out of a higher level that they might be recommended to, I think is an important one that I forgot to ask. So if a student is not identified as somebody who, either by their SAT scores or by their teacher or by Equal Opportunity Schools, is identified to move up, but the student or their parents are interested, they are also able to request that. So it goes both ways.
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, very good presentation. I know that there are possibly questions that students of, parents of students who were already in an AP class, that's sort of the third group of stakeholders, that I'd like to understand, is there an impact to those students who would ordinarily have been in an AP class? And if they are now working with students who are not maybe quite ready for the AP class, but want to be there, what's the environment impact for them? Or is there no environment impact for them? Like, the teacher is now dealing with students of very different capabilities or different levels. So what does that look like?
So research would indicate to us that students who are enrolled in a heterogeneous environment, it has no negative impact on any student who would have traditionally been in that setting. So if I was already an AP student, and now I am in a course with students who are taking an AP course for the first time, there is no impact on my learning. It's also important to recognize that we're talking about students who are meeting and exceeding standards, but just have traditionally not taken an AP class. We're not saying that this student is necessarily inept or inadequate to take an AP course. This is a student who has demonstrated mastery of a standard, but has not had an opportunity to challenge themselves in our most rigorous level of course. So we believe that this student belongs there and should be there in order... So we believe that this student belongs there and should be there in order to meet that. Additionally, there are many metrics that go into student success in AP courses. And so we talked about some of those mindsets that are important for a student that goes beyond GPA or test scores. And so when students have motivation to do well in their AP or advanced-level or dual-credit course, it's a course that they're interested in and they're invested in, they will meet the expectation and rise to that.
Two things just to add to. Thank you, Larry. That was a great answer, but two additions. Last week, I received from the Illinois State Board one of their announcements, and it was that Illinois was ranked number two in the nation for increasing the percent of students of color who were participating in AP classes, all the while increasing the overall AP scores. So I'll send the board that article. So I think that's, again, it's not our local data, but we feel pretty strongly from data like that. The second thing is when you go to the College Board and the advanced placement websites, they encourage open enrollment and they encourage us as a school district to build as many on-ramps as possible for students to participate in the AP program. So I think that us utilizing both EOS and the Advanced Accelerated Placement Act to help more students know that they can be successful in that advanced environment will bear the fruit of increased student achievement.
And I just want to add on, Ms. Hessel, to your question that you asked earlier. Some students, you may have asked this question, I believe you did. When we're talking about the students on the outreach list, those trusted adult conversations become important because of that opt-out that you were talking about earlier. So if I am a first-time advanced course enrollee, I may, I may have a conversation with my family and decide that it's not for me. The work with EOS and their trusted adult is to really encourage me to take that class and to accept that challenge. So that additional layer of EOS provides more encouragement for the student who may not have taken the class and may have said otherwise, although I'm recommended for it, I'm going to decline this.
And so do those conversations include the type of supports that are available to them so that they can be successful? Because obviously, we're never going to try to put a student in a position where they can't be successful.
What the conversations include are looking at the student's interest and trying to align their interests with the offerings that we have. So when they look at the student insight card, it will tell them what the student has decided as things that they are good at, their hobbies, their interests, what their career paths are, and to identify challenges that they may have. So as we're having this conversation, I can see that for any particular student, they may be interested in pursuing a career in technology or computer engineering or something like that. And so I am, as the trusted adult, giving them the options of what courses are available that may align with that. We're still developing, then, what supports can be put in place. So when we had these conversations, we didn't have what that support would look like at the time. But in future conversations, we can have that. But for this year, it was about trying to get the best match of advanced-level course for the student based on what they might be interested in.
I would almost expect, and to piggyback on the more students in the program, you would expect, you know, people might think, oh, you're diluting the class because you have way too many students now that normally wouldn't take an advanced placement or dual-credit, but the numbers do show that even more, the percentage of those passing or getting higher fours and fives, for example, on AP, do go up. And that's, I know it's been proven in my experience, but I'm almost thinking out loud here that as we get more and more, and this is the education world in general, in the high school world, more and more dual-credit, and you're looking at career pathways and the dual-credit courses that might come along with those career pathways, you're going to get even more specific interest in students, for example, in healthcare or in whatever it might be, that are really very into a particular career path that will excel in those dual-credit courses, in those more advanced courses, whereas they normally wouldn't have been thought of as a, you know, an advanced placement-type of student, but because of the change in that. So I'm just speculating. I'm not, you know, that's not based on any data or anything, but I'm anticipating that might be the case.
It's an interesting point, and it occurs to me from your comment that this really dovetails quite nicely with the explore-multiple-paths strand of our strategic plan. I'm curious to hear a little bit about the data that we're required to report to the state, because I'm assuming if it's not going to be on our report card, there will be some method that ISB is tracking our compliance with the Accelerated Placement Act. Is that something that you can speak to this evening? Or do you want to get back to us with how that data, how we're going to be required to track and report that data?
It's not something that I'm familiar with right now, but we can look into it and find out.
Yeah, it's not an emergency, but I am curious to know how we're going to be expected to track and report this data.
I taught both AP Environmental Science and an earth science course that was dual-credit. My experience is that we wanted to attract as many students into our classes as we possibly could, and so there was a wide variety of abilities in there. But all of them demonstrated the basic skills that they needed to be successful in an AP class. We expected our test scores to go down, and we were fine with that because we wanted more kids to be involved. That was more important to us than the test scores. That did not bear out at all. Our test scores went up. I can't say strongly enough how ardent I am as a supporter of kids getting a college-level experience before they graduate. That's not to say that I want to push kids into a class that they're not ready for, because I definitely am not, that is not what we're after. I'm also not interested in stressing kids out because one of the ways you can increase participation is by taking a kid that's already taking three AP classes and having them take a fourth, and it's too much. So I understand the balance. The thing that's going to help our students the most, and most of our kids go to college, is that college-level experience while they're still in high school, while they have the supports around them and the teachers that are with them every day. So I'm glad to hear that we are pushing this direction, but I would like to say it with that caveat. We are not pushing students who are not ready to take an AP course into an AP course.
And we're also not pushing that same student into the fourth or fifth AP course.
Correct.
Either.
Well, and that is exactly the point of my question, that, you know, students and parents are the expert on that student and parent. And if they decide a fourth AP class is a non-starter, then that's the answer.
Right. We are not interested, as a board, in pushing kids into things that they're not ready for or in overstressing kids just so that we can get more kids in AP classes.
Absolutely. Regardless of what the state is tracking, that is not what we are going to do.
I mean, I think we've heard from our students over and over, they can't take a day off of school because they're enrolled in three and four APs. We are not trying to exacerbate a situation that we've already been hearing from our students that they don't, but they feel compelled to do to prepare themselves for high-achieving and high-selective schools. And that's one of the things that I wanted to ask you on the graphs. With six hundred and fifty students in Vernon Hills, and I'm trying to find the number, five hundred and fifty, no, five fifty in Vernon Hills and six fifty in LHS, what does that look like? Now, are those considerably more? Is that figure considerably more than what's taking this year? Have we had to add more sections? I mean, just in practical terms, what has that looked like to our section? And, or to our schedule? Are we prepared, I'm assuming we're prepared for it with our teachers, but what, how much have we had to increase the AP? And AP, I know, has some internal kind of framework where that scope and sequence is kind of prescribed by the National College Board. So now our next level with honors, what has that looked like as far as an increased enrollment into our honors? And that's, I mean, you don't have to have these now, but I would like to compare, what is that going to look like next year now that we have our enrollment set? How many sections of these AP and/or honors have we had to increase from this year to next year? And how, you know, honors is a little different. It's not as prescribed by the college boards. So, you know, I know that I'm hearing from other people who have asked me, and I would ask the same question. I feel very confident in our teachers that the scope and sequence would stay the same. And I guess we want to make sure, how are we raising the bar for all as opposed to lowering the bar for those that are in the cheers? What are we going to be monitoring to make sure that this is, it is being successful? And then I also really worry about these conversations. Are we pushing kids into a situation? How do we balance that? Because we keep hearing from our student reps and different students that come that there's just this pressure to be in as many APs as you can. And I don't think that's what we've been, the goal of this, and in my perspective and all of our conversations, has been offer an opportunity that has not been there before, for whatever reason. And how do we keep that as our true north, as our guiding post?
I'll add one more question to that for the future, for next year, the following year, whatever. And that is, we talk AP, but I'm curious our progress on dual-credit and how we get more access to dual-credit in addition to AP courses? Because I know a lot of, there's a lot of interest in that, and a lot of, there's benefit to both, but I think there's some benefit to dual-credit that hasn't necessarily been available to us or accessible to us for various reasons. And just curious how that trajectory will look like in the future.
Thank you.
One question that I had. While I'm a very ardent supporter of the change, it is still a change for our students. What measures are we putting in or what measures are we tracking? What data are we tracking that will let us demonstrate the efficacy of these measures taken, right? Like, of these programs that are being changed? How will we track the success of those programs? How are we tracking how that improves anything for our students? Because that's the ultimate goal of all this, that our students do better. They have better opportunities, and hence, we should be doing better. What measures are we taking? What data would we be tracking?
Beginning next year, we'll be looking at how students' growth numbers compare over time from the beginning of the year, STAR assessment, to the middle of the year and end of the year STAR assessment data. So we'll have three standardized points of measurement for us to determine how effective our instruction is, how effective our programming has been, how effective our interventions has been. Additionally, our MTSS model allows us to determine exit criteria for students who are in tier-two interventions. And so we'll be collecting that data to make informed decisions around when a student is no longer requiring to have a tier-two intervention. And so that will be based on data. And then locally, we will be examining our students' grades to determine how successful our students are in these courses.
So I don't think that directly answered my question, or maybe I phrased my question incorrectly. I'm talking specifically about how the change in these classes and how we are realigning accelerated placement and heterogeneous classes. When we are changing the enrollment and how, when people get access to these courses, how are we tracking the success of the students?
Well, I think maybe the STAR test that he referred to measures student competency in each of the areas among mathematics and reading. So it wouldn't give us necessarily data on AP-US history, but reading comprehension definitely plays a big role in some, many of the AP courses. And we would be able to track students who are in a certain profile of course. Is that contributing to their increased reading skills? Is that contributing to their increased science? But it also goes to the point of why many districts have made the transition to have some common assessments in some of these classes. That's something that, as a district, we haven't instituted. Some core teams do have common assessments and that used to inform some of their PLC decisions, but in the past, it hasn't been something that we've used for program review for a program like this. But again, that could be something we explore for the future, but that's not something we're prepared to embed for next year's curriculum.
Wouldn't we be able to see, I mean, AP is a much easier beast because we're not governing it, right? And we have to meet those requirements and look at AP test scores of three or better or four or better. And Don's experience, he did see an increase. I know I would want to see that, too. I mean, I guess the fear is, and I don't think this is going to happen, but I think if you don't say what the, you know, what's the elephant in the room, there's a fear that we are diluting everything and that if we have so many more AP classes, so many more honors classes, the college prep has just turned into another striving learners. And that's what we don't want to see happen. Does that make sense? I mean, I know that's not the reality, but how do we show that that is not the reality?
How do we dispel the rumors that go around? And how do we dispel the fears that people have that this change is going to dilute those classes? I know that's not the case. I know that's not what we are pushing, and I know from the educator's experience, that is, that has not been the case. How do we collect data to prove that is not the case? So that we can confidently dispel those rumors?
I think some of the, right. I do think some of the things that we've talked about is exactly what we're using right now to measure student achievement, grades, STAR test, you know, AP exams. If we can think of some additional measures to include in the future, we would be very happy to do so. But that's how we currently measure student success, who are in our current coursework. So we would be continuing to monitor those same indicators of student success for students who are now in the same, maybe in a different level, but in the same English class. I think one other thing, and I'm glad that Don spoke so elegantly about your experience, but one of the things that I think it's important, we'll continue to share the evidence that shows no scores, they're the same or go up. But I think the other thing is to challenge the assumption that there's a scarcity of how much students can achieve. Like, there's only a certain percent of kids who can be, excel at any given curriculum. And that's just not true. It is, if we believe that our teachers have the talent that they do and given the right instruction and the right support, all kids can learn at high levels, then we have to shift our paradigm. It's not about selecting which kids belong in any particular learning environment. It's saying, we want as many kids as possible to have that opportunity and provide the supports. Again, not pushing them and not making it be so much of a burden that they aren't well. But I think it's from a scarcity model to an abundance model that we are in control of providing a learning environment where we can develop those achievement capabilities and the grit and the self-efficacy skills that we know will carry them forward in college or in the workplace.
Hundred percent agree. What I'm trying to say is that let's be intentional about showcasing that there is success from these measures that we are taking. It's not that we are not supportive of this. I'm a wholehearted supporter. Don't mistake me saying this again and again, that I'm not a supporter of this. I'm an ardent supporter of this. I'm just saying, let's be intentional in showcasing and measuring and showing and demonstrating the data that there is truth in this, there is success in this, and here's how we demonstrated this change positively affected our students, because that's the whole goal.
And if there are any measures beyond the ones that we are already tracking to show student success, grades, SAT scores, AP scores, STAR testing, that we're not using, I would encourage the board to have those conversations with administration to add that. But we've been very transparent and intentional and repetitive about looking at our Illinois report card that tracks all of that data. And we have the grade and the STAR data to add additional color to the SAT and AP data. AP data that we currently track. But if there's anything in addition that would add to that transparency and avoid any scarcity narrative, I encourage you to share those ideas with administration.
Or anyone.
Yes.
I, I actually, I have a question. And I think, I think this always helps me clarify nearly anything related to educational initiatives. We live in a, a unique district. We have two schools. We have different demographics at those two schools. We have a unique makeup of students. We have, we have so much good that goes on in our district, but I frequently find myself, as an educator, as a parent, in so many facets of my life, looking around and saying, well, what is everyone else doing? And I think a key piece perhaps missing from this public conversation is what are our peer districts doing? Who's had success with this? What does their success look like? I think it sometimes helps to alleviate any of that scarcity narrative that's happening in, in community settings, to see where these, these types of initiatives have been successful? How have they been successful? What has implementation looked like? And I think, you know, I think that always helps address stress through all stakeholder groups. And so personally, I would love to know if we have that information tonight. Great. If we don't and can hear about it in the future, wonderful. I would love to know what that looks like in peer districts that perhaps have similar demographics to us. They may not even be in this part of Illinois. Certainly, again, we are unique. But I, I would find that to be really useful information.
It's part of change management. I come from a world where we are constantly preparing people for change. And it's, as much as I'm saying it, we have to be repetitive, and that's how we prepare people for change that comes along. No one wants to change. That's human tendency. We do not want to change. If status quo is fine, then let's just go with it. So when we prepare for change, then let's just keep being repetitive, keep bringing this up, and just showcase how we have been successful in this.
Okay. I think we may have come to a point where we can move forward.
Can I just mention one thing very quickly?
Sure.
To clarify a point. Policy 6135, the accelerated placement program, was a new policy that we instituted.
It was. I just realized that I had seen it so many times that it felt like.
And that's how we do policy, we talk it to death. But your point about, and Mr. Varn's point about, it's, it was already consistent with what we wanted to do for our students.
Right.
But it was a new policy in 23.
Okay. Well, we are on track to beat Jim's record for the longest PNP. We now have an update on grading and assessment guidelines. This should be brief.
Good evening. I'm Charlotte Eames, Director of Data and Assessment for the District, and I am here tonight with our grading and assessment update. So just as a reminder, this is the goal of the grading and assessment team. This team convened in the fall of 2022 and has been working since that time to recommend some new, updated, more equitable, more consistent grading and assessment practices. So our goal from the outset has been to investigate, analyze, and recommend revised grading procedures that are more consistent and equitable for all learners. So we have had two teams. Our team changed slightly between the 2022-23 school year and the 23-24 school year. So I always want to take the opportunity in these updates to recognize the members of these teams, which is a combination of teachers, counselors, administrators, from all of our locations. And so the main events that have occurred since our last update to the board, our team met, we have been meeting each month this school year. So our last update to the board was in October. So since then, we've had four meetings. We've met in November, December, January, and February. The bulk of our committee work has been in clarifying and editing the grading and assessment guidelines. Previously, in our current iteration of this, in our pilot year, those were called the grading and assessment beliefs and parameters. The new version is called the grading and assessment guidelines. So the document will be updated for the 24-25 school year. Part of our pilot year was to receive feedback from various stakeholders and really hone in on the things that are working very well, what maybe needs to be clarified to implement this with fidelity across the district in the fall. So that work is very close to being finished, but that has been where our work has really centered in the past few months. In February, we had two presentations of the guidelines and some information on how this rollout will occur for our staff. So we had, on February 14th, we had building presentations. This was presented to, all staff was invited, but it was targeted at classroom teachers. So teachers in, in both buildings received the same presentation that really outlined what are the guidelines. So that was kind of the focus of the February 14th presentation. And then on February 19th was our institute day, and we had an opportunity at that institute day for our department chairs to hold department meetings during which a part of that was to present on some of the hows. How are we going to make the decisions that need to be made, timelines, et cetera? So we had those two presentations in February. And following that, there was a question form that our staff had access to. And so the grading and assessment team in March, at the end of February and into March, has been working on ensuring that we are answering those questions as they come in. We have, we had many questions come in right away. Now we've had a little lull as the time has gone on, but we continue to monitor that question form. As of this moment, we have responded to all of the questions that have come in through that form. So our upcoming work from here, our grading and assessment team will meet in March, on March 21st. We will meet again. We will continue to meet through the end of the year. We have much work still to do. But our March meeting will really focus on officially finalizing the guidelines document that will go into effect in the fall. So there is really just one remaining section that we are working on, really developing clear language around, and that is on grading scales. So that's the one remaining section that we need to finalize. And so we will be doing that at our March 21st meeting. We have committed to having that finalized and communicated by spring break. So we will, we will be getting that done. Then in April and May, our, our team will continue to meet, and we do have other things that we will be continuing to work on. We are continuing to work on professional learning experiences. We will be putting together some communication that is more public facing. So far, communication has really been internal, so we have some of those projects ahead. But where the focus really will be then in April and May for our, our district widespread is in April, course teams will be developed for next year, and they will begin meeting to discuss and reach consensus on the decision items that are a part of the guidelines. And we'll go into that a little deeper in the coming slides. So there are certain decisions within the guidelines that course teams will need to make. So we'll look at that in the coming slides. But that will start to happen in April. Course teams will begin to meet to have those conversations. And then in May, course teams will submit their decisions. There's a form that they will submit. Department chairs will review and approve those decisions, and we do have some time built in in case any changes are necessary before the finalized decisions are due on May 24th. And I do have a more explicit timeline coming on that as well. So these are the course team decisions that will need to be made by all course teams. And a course team simply means a group of teachers who are teaching the same class, so at, at each building. So the course teams will need to make these decisions together and submit them. And so if we think back to the goal that we saw at the beginning of the presentation, one of our big initiatives with this is consistency. And so that is where course team decisions come in. So there is a level of choice in, in, in these areas, but the course team will come to a consensus in those areas. So it's three main areas that have some breakdowns. So within the grading formula, course teams can choose anywhere from 80 to 100% of the grade that will be in the summative work category, and then 0 to 20 in the coursework category. And then it will be a decision course teams can make if they are going to have a required final exam or experience. And if so, what percentage of the grade that will make up? The grading scale, which that is the piece that is not quite finalized, so more to come on that in the future. And then the reassessment parameters really isn't a new thing. This is something that has been in place for the past several years. We really have not changed any pieces of what has been required in the past, but we have made that decision-making process part of the grading and assessment decision-making process. So rather than course teams submitting two things in two places, it's all combined into one. But this really isn't new. These are decisions course teams have been making for the past few years.
Charlotte, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
On your formula, does that mean the grading formula can add up to 140%?
No. That's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up. So if we take the first two bullets at the top under grading formula, and we think about that as the, the grades that will go into like the P1, P2, P3, those progress, and then at the end of the semester, if there is a final exam or experience, then that will get whatever percentage that team decides. And what's left over in the rest of that is what came from the first two bullets. Does that, does that make sense? And in our guidelines, we have that very, very explicitly stated with numerous examples for how the math can work and different ways that it can work out. I was wanting to simplify it for the slide, but does that, does that make sense? Yes. Yes.
I have one more. So does this mean that from course to course, it could be different? So you could have, let's say, a 5% of final semester grade in math, but it could be up to 20 in science?
That is correct, yes. So the, the consistency will come among course teams, so that if I am taking biology with teacher A, and Larry is taking biology with teacher B, that we are having the same grading and assessment experience, but across different courses, that could be different. And this is our more detailed timeline. So this is looking at the decision-making process for our course teams. So after spring break, course teams will be developed and will begin meeting. We've, we've tried to give plenty of time because we will have numerous teachers, most of our teachers, who are on numerous course teams. So they will have to meet with, with various groups. So the initial decision form is due by May 8th. Department chairs will be reviewing if there are any clarifications needed. That will happen by May 18th, uh, May 17th, and then May 24th will be our final submission of those decisions by our course teams. And so we're coming to the end of our pilot year, and we are going to begin our district-wide implementation next year. But it's really important to, to me and to the team to always have the understanding that we know our work is not finished. This is an initiative that, that will be ongoing. So we're not just going to put something in place and walk away, we're done, we no longer have to think about this. We are going to continue to learn, continue to grow, and as we do, we will continue to come back together to ensure that we are putting into practice the best grading and assessment guidelines that we absolutely can for our students. So we, at a certain point, have to say, okay, here's what we're doing next school year, but we will continue to learn and, and, and to grow and to make changes as needed and as we receive feedback. And that is.
Can you go back one slide?
Yep.
So teacher teams are going to need to meet in order to make those decisions and have the conversations. What release time are we giving teams to do that? What does that structure look like?
So there's, there's different options. One thing that we will be opening up is on days when PLCs would normally meet. Those PLCs will be excused from their normal PLC meetings so that course teams can meet. And that's very much with the understanding that our, our PLC teams and our course teams, especially when we're talking about two different school years, will be different. So, so as that works for our course teams, they will be excused from those normal PLC meetings to get that done. We also have numerous department-level meetings that are upcoming, so that's another opportunity. And some of our departments are wanting to make at least some department-level choices. So that, and that varies from department to department, but we have some departments that will be able to make some of those decisions at a department level, and will start having those conversations in those department meetings. And then even possibly reserve time for course teams to then get together to do that. And we have also communicated to our teachers that if more is needed, especially in the case of teachers who are on multiple course teams, that we will work with them on a case-by-case basis to ensure that they have the time to meet.
Okay. So we can give them release time or something so that they can perfect? Wow, I'm not going to beat the record.
Darn.
Yeah, darn. All right. So that finishes the discussion items, future agenda items. Does anybody have any additions other than those that are listed in the public content? Very good. I'm going to adjourn the PNP meeting, and let's.
Can we do a five-minute?
Just do a.
Just get this roll.
Yeah. Okay.
Just feel free to take a break as needed.
I'm fine with that.
Go ahead and call to order the March 11th Facilities and Finance Committee meeting. Already did the pledge earlier. Invitation for public comment. Does anyone wish to address the Facilities and Finance Committee? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. First item is solar options update.
Dan?
I was talking, sorry.
That's okay. Solar options.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. I figured that's what you were talking about.
Counting on a brief break. Forgive me for how basic this looks, but content, let's focus on the content that's there. I have with me Master Dave Wilmes, who is a community member, but also has been talking to me a lot about solar. He works with, forgive me, what was the, Sun Peak with solar. And so provided with you information, last committee meeting in February, solar information, some numbers, and I said I'm not yet able to explain. The good news is I am now able to explain those numbers. And there will be more numbers that I don't get, I'm not yet able to explain. So this will take a little bit. So this will take a little bit more time to do. But let me walk you through this.
You have something to share.
I have some, thank you, Eli. I apologize, I also share on the live stream, so I need to do that. I apologize. All right. So in order, so big picture, you know, the interest in solar, we were looking at developing a, a plan for how can we try to catch up? One of the things the board was interested in was as we replace roofs, how can we look at adding solar? That's part of something that we still are figuring out. But another thing that we do is how can we catch up with where we, where we've at? So I've been talking to Dave for years now, and we had some cool ideas. And then I think the pandemic hit, and that really slowed things down. So the first step is trying to figure out what roofs are even available. So we have not done as many roofs recently at, at LHS than we have at Vernon Hills. And so we asked Mark with the engineering team to look at what roofs would be sufficient. So we have a few roofs. So down in the bottom left-hand corner, there is, oh, there's my mouse, is, is the pool addition that was made. That is, that was not made with the structural supports to support solar panels on the roof. So that's an example of a roof that red color means it's insufficient. There are two other roofs that are yellow that were done relatively recently that are able to support solar. So with that, then is an idea for possible solar. So then you see on the bottom left-hand side, you can see there's some panels there. And then on the top right-hand side, there's panels there. So those are meant to overlap with the spaces available. Then at Vernon Hills, there's quite a bit more roof that is available. Those are in yellow, those are relatively recent roofs. And the West Gym in the bottom right, bottom left-hand corner, that was done in 2020. We intentionally built that with a stronger roof to hold panels. So that's our best solar-ready roof that we've had. There are other roofs that we have replaced somewhat recently, but part of the issue that we're concerned about is a lot of times they're shaded. And so for solar panels, we need the sun to hit them. So that, those are areas that we would need to kind of look at. But in general, we stuck with the areas that are yellow. And so that is what that can look like from a bird's eye view over the top of Vernon Hills. So let's talk about how do you pay for solar panels? There's really three major ways that you can do that. The first is cash. And well, I've got some numbers here for cash. One of the benefits, by the way, Dave is here also to help keep me honest as I'm going through this because I had a crash course. So one of the benefits of having the, paying for cash is you own the panels. The best, that is, that is going to be the best solution in terms of maximizing your savings on panels and things like that. But it requires money to pay. So you get immediate savings from the energy and you can get incentives paid back. So that's, cash is a, is a main way you can pay for it. Another way is the PPA, which stands for Power Purchase Agreement. Excuse me, Power Purchase Agreement. And so how that works is a company installs and owns the panels. And what we do is we basically buy the electricity from that company at a negotiated rate. Good so far? And so the way you would compare that to is roughly right now, what we spend per kilowatt hour is about 10 cents. All right, it varies throughout the month, but 10 cents is a nice round number. And what you would compare is you might have a company that says, okay, we'll install these panels, but you pay us 4 cents a kilowatt hour. And so that's 6 cents difference between 10 and whatever that number is. That's the savings that you're talking about. PPAs can range. There are shorter-term PPAs, which is 10, maybe 12, 15 years. And there's longer ones that can go as much as 20 years. And then depending on how you negotiate that, at the end of the lease, there could be a variety of options. That maybe you can negotiate to keep panels. You could maybe negotiate that they, they take them with them. Are those really the, what are the other options? Yeah, at that point. Or you could look at, if it's 25 years and they're kind of at the end of their life, maybe, you know, they look at replacing them. That's a, that's a power purchase agreement. So you're buying, you're essentially buying, agreeing to buy electricity from this company. The third option is leasing. And so that is where another company will own and install, and we pay it back, or we lease the installation and pay it back over years. So you have, almost like a mortgage payment, you have a fixed payment you would have each month, year on something like this. And the one part, with the PPA, the, the company that owns it and installs it probably can get all the incentives. The part that I'm not terribly sure about the lease, this is where I need to learn more, is I don't know, there might be incentives affected by a lease. I saw some of that, but I'm not totally sure. We'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on that. But those are really the three different ways that you pay for these. In terms of incentives, on a big-picture level, there's really three major categories of incentives. One is the federal energy credit, that's 30% off the cost. That used to not really be available for schools. And then it was tricky to try to figure out, well, how, how could a school do that? Maybe, maybe you find a, a private company that will do it, and then they get the savings because they've, because we don't file a tax return. So how are we going to get a 30% credit on a return that we don't file? They can get it, and maybe we can share the savings. That was tricky and a really creative idea. But now districts can have access to that money. So that's fantastic. That is, that has probably been the most significant incentive on solar that maybe we've seen. The second one is Illinois Solar Renewable Energy Credits, renewable energy credits, also called SRECs. That is the idea where you, you get incentives paid back over 15 years. And it's really the first six years, you get most of the money back. Like literally, you get a check back. And then at, then you wait until the 15th year to get the final check. To, I'm not sure why, why they do that, just to make sure you're- There you go. But the check you get in year 15 is not a lot of money. So it's more incentive early on. And then ComEd rebates. ComEd has rebates, so that's the energy provider. They have rebates on, I think the inverters. They have a program for inverters. So that, those are the major rebates. Okay, so now, this is my best attempt at kind of compiling some of the numbers I showed you last time, but in the way that my brain works. So for Vernon Hills and Libertyville, you can see it's a system size. So that is the size of the solar panel system. So the, the pictures that I showed you, that size of that system would be 78.8 kilowatts of DC current, or direct current, at Vernon, at Libertyville, and 430 kilowatts at Vernon Hills, for a total combined of 509 between the two buildings. Those, that system would produce what we would expect to produce, about the, for Libertyville, 97,000 kilowatt hours a year, and Vernon Hills, 537,000 kilowatt hours, for a combined 634,000 kilowatt hours. Just for reference, we're like 4 million a year probably in our buildings. So just to give you a frame of reference, this, it's not like, this is going to replace all the electricity in the buildings. It's not, but it's going to offset a portion. The comparison of that, so if you take the current district cost at 10 cents a kilowatt hour, then really if, so in that first chart, if you can avoid, if you can get that 97,000 kilowatt hours avoiding paying that, then you save $9,700. Do you understand how that math works? That make sense? All right, and this is why it was really helpful to talk through, but there's operations of maintenance. So you need to maintain the panels and you need to make sure kind of the system is working. You can either do that internally, but we don't have solar experts, or you can pay a company to do that. And it's, it, there's not a magic science to it. It's roughly around 10%ish of what you're saving. I'm, I'm using very round numbers here to just illustrate the point. So the net potential savings is about 8,600 in that first scenario for LHS. Net potential savings, 47,000 combined, potential savings net, 56,000. So that's just savings on the electricity. But you have to outlay the cost to install the panels. So based on the system that Dave was looking at, call it about a million dollars, 200,000 at Libertyville, 800,000 at Liberty, Vernon Hills, excuse me, for about a million dollars to install that. If you just compared that to the, the net potential savings, that's how many years it would cost you to break even by saving 8,000 a year, or 47,000 a year, 56,000 a year. We haven't talked about incentives yet. That has been the biggest barrier to solar is how long it takes to get your money back. And so that, that has probably been the biggest obstacle from a financial perspective. And there are incentives. So based on the numbers that Dave provided, the SRECs would estimate about 90,000 for LHS, 450,000, 55,000 at Vernon Hills, for a total of 545,000. 30% federal credit between the two buildings, 300,000. And the ComEd inverter rebates, 127,000, for a total incentives of 979,000. So that mean, if you net that out, the money that you're going to get back, you're talking the net install price could be 33,000 for LHS, 9,000 for Vernon Hills, and 42,000 combined. Which then, if you take the annuals, because once you install, then you start realizing the annual savings. If you look at the payback, you're talking four years to break even at LHS. The first year, quarter through, quarter of the way through the year, you would have broken even at Vernon Hills. And between the two, within the first year, you're talking the ability to recoup all of that. Now, that's in theory, because the way the incentives works, they actually pay you back over multiple years. So it's not exactly that, but if you kind of look at a long-term view, it's a pretty quick payback. So that is the cash. All I can say is from my perspective, if Dave's numbers are true, and I'm trusting those numbers are really close, this is incredible, in my opinion. I've never seen something that close. So what would it take for us to do something like this? You have to outlay the million dollars now. So you have to outlay the million dollars now, knowing that in probably six years, you're, less than six years, you will have gotten back all the money, plus definitely saved a ton of money. But you're probably going to get most of your, most of your money back, even net of energy savings and everything, probably in the first four years, maybe, if you net the incentives with the energy savings. So with all the talk that we've talked about facilities and everything like that, I've told you the projects that we have, the cafeteria, the bathrooms, and the Vernon Hills LST is all we can afford. And that's true. So if we move forward with something like this, this would temporarily get us down below where we, where I would feel comfortable with us, knowing you could get back there within a few years. So we have our own issues of getting back to an appropriate levels that we have to deal with. This would add to that a little bit, but this would help long-term. This is the kind of tweak that we're talking about that can have an impact over that. I think, did you put the cash? What was the total yours in? Couple million over 30 years? Yeah, right? It just, it's those, those numbers adding up over a long time. That's pretty meaningful. Not to mention the environmental impacts that that can have too. This is purely just looking at numbers. Additionally, so the PPA, I have numbers on the PPA, I have numbers on the lease, but I don't understand them yet. And I need to understand them before I can show them to you. So both of them are cheaper than what we're doing now. It's just, there's pros and cons of each. So I want to show you that so that we're transparent, but I, I do think the cash is probably the best option to look at right now, given the incentives that are there and available. So with that, I just want to say I'm so very thankful for Dave and his time and his patience with me to explain this. I ask a lot of questions because I need to understand this, because I want you all to understand this. Because this is not a little bit of out of money that we're talking about spending here, but it could have a big impact over the long term. Dave, I just want to give you an opportunity. Is there something that you want to add? Knowing that we still have more information that we're, I'm just not quite ready to share with you yet, but I just give you a chance to.
You've done a great job. You're an honor student. I don't know the grading rubric yet, but I, I'd rate you way up there. First of all, I'd like to say thanks for considering solar. Getting to talk to the people that own flat roof systems is a difficult job. Any flat roof in Illinois, especially in all of Illinois, has an opportunity to basically get the system paid for through incentives. And I have been a fan of cash, but the PPA rates are very nice as well. And that's where you just agreed to buy the electricity that the roof produces. And there's no risk to the score. You don't have to lay, outlay any money. The system saves at least 60% of the electricity costs per year. And to me, solar is the system that keeps on giving. And so that money accumulates. Historically, electricity costs have gone up, and this is a good way to mitigate the challenges of higher electric bills down, down the way. The one, I'm an educator. I, I was teaching at Stevenson High School, and we had a large campus. When I look at this, one question that might come up is, well, when you look at Libertyville High School itself, this building, to put solar on this school is much more expensive than Vernon Hills. And one temptation, yeah. And it's, the systems are further apart. There's going to be more electric conduit running between the systems, and it's going to be a more expensive system. The only thing I would say is solar is great to do. I think if District 128 decides to do this, do both schools, even though Libertyville is more expensive? Because it takes, gives an opportunity for both schools to feel that the district is doing a good job and do it as a district rather than each school individually. And Dan, I think, is going to be one of those students that'll continue to learn. And if you want him to come up with some harder numbers that are, you know, to compare the cost of the different systems, I'm sure he'll learn that and be able to share that in the future. But thank you for the opportunity to consider solar. I think that, that looking at other schools in the area that are doing solar, it's, it's important to, to be sure to vet the installers. And it's, a RFP is a good way to go. That way you make sure that you're getting a good bang for your buck. So that said, I'll pass it back to Don, Dan.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Dave, is net metering an option in all three of these scenarios?
Yes.
Okay.
So the question is net metering. What is net metering? That means if the school is making more electricity than it's using, and some of the electricity is put out onto the grid, would the school district get credit for that electricity that supplies back to the grid? And the answer is yes. But that is going to end and change. ComEd has asked that over time, as more and more solar is put in, that they stop that as an incentive. I don't think we're real close to that point yet, but net metering is something that we have now.
Good.
And the other thing with that is, even if net metering continued, you don't, you're not going to get, you're not going to get 100% of the return back. Meaning they're not going to, you're not going to get the full value of that electricity you're putting back on the grid back as money. Like it's going to be just a percentage.
Yeah, that's it. Can you use that over, instead of selling it back to you, can you use that against Libertyville's bill? I know there's-
Right.
There's a touchy thing, but that, you know, is there, instead of selling it back to ComEd, you use that energy produced to offset costs at Libertyville High School?
No.
Since Vernon Hills has more roof, you know?
Correct. My term is schools are energy hogs. There's a lot of electricity being consumed. And at the size of both systems, I think it'll be very rare when the electricity that's being produced on the roof is going to actually get to the grid. So this is basically going to be money, or the electricity produced is going to save money directly to those bills. The only way you can have two different meters combined for net metering is if both meters are on the same bill. And I don't think you have independent, one bill that covers both high schools.
Questions?
So I'll start by saying this is very encouraging. This is good information. I would just like to see, as we're going through this, and maybe as you're looking through the other two options, is sort of a longer-term view of this? So solar panels typically last 25 years. Sort of look at over a 25-year span, what will we get out of this? I think it should be a really good story. But just to see how that fluctuates and, and maintenance costs maybe go up towards the end, that kind of thing. So just to, just to- So just to, just to get a better idea of the long-term, what we get out of that in, in all three scenarios. But I think this is very encouraging, and I think we're, we're on the right path. Other comments, questions? Don, I know you probably have some comments.
Sure. So if I heard you correctly, if we came up with a million dollars, which we don't have, we could own them, but we could pay that back within six years. And then the $58,000 a year that we would be saving just goes into our bank account. But that puts Dan in the uncomfortable position of writing a million-dollar check. That puts us in a, in a bad spot. Or we could go with a PPA and put no money out, have no maintenance cost, and immediately reduce our energy bills and start getting payback as soon as the system goes online. So could we do that? And then theoretically, in the future with all other additions, use that savings as our incentive to buy with cash additional panels down the road?
You could, like, so PPA would be easier. On our side, it's easier, right? We just find a company and then negotiate the rate and pay it. I just want to be clear, we would pay for the maintenance, because that's assumed in the price that you're paying, like, it's built.
Right.
So you're going to pay for it either way. But yeah, PPA is easier, but you won't, you won't probably technically save as much money as you could going with the cash option. So that's pros and cons of each option. So the pro on the cash side is, you're going to save the most money in that scenario likely. The con is the capital upfront. The PPA, pro, no capital upfront, long-term, not quite as much savings as you could have had, had you done cash.
With the PPA, that's a fixed rate you're buying?
It, so it's negotiated, I believe, and so I'm, I'm assuming there's usually an escalator in there. So because the idea is the cost of electricity would change over time too, so I'm assuming, I'm, I'm assuming there's a, it, it probably changes over the period of time for the PPA, would you?
Yes, many PPAs have a 3% escalator. Because the historic cost increase of electricity has gone up about 3% per year. I am hesitant to sign a 25-year escalating electricity contract. Solar energy, without any incentives, is the cheapest form of energy today. And the PPAs that we can write have a zero escalator. And the other thing that's an advantage of the PPA is, if you don't make any electricity, you aren't losing any money. But with a PPA, you're getting a 60% return at a flat rate, and the economics of that work really well.
Yeah, because either way, if we own it, or if it's a zero escalation every year, the savings, the electricity we generate is more valuable.
Right.
But we're not paying any more for it.
The other thing that I like about a PPA is that you're not burdening any other staff of Libertyville High School to watch the system. And with a PPA, all of the electronic monitoring of the inverters, making sure production is happening is done. You'd get a phone call, we've got an inverter on your roof that we want to check tomorrow. Is there a time that's best for you? They come in, they take care of it, and there's no burden on anyone's responsibility. I know everyone at a school is already overworked, especially school boards. So not adopting any more responsibility is a very nice thing.
So to clarify, and I kind of liken this to like, when a, a person who's evaluating whether they should buy a home or rent a home with PPA, my understanding is that anything maintenance-wise related to the panels, then is the assumed responsibility by the company who owns it, we would, like you just said, we'd receive a phone call or some type of notification that said, we're coming to repair. In the other model, though, with cash, we assume those responsibilities, those costs.
Well, so that, that's part of the maintenance, the maintenance agreement that we would put in that we, it would, we're, we're assuming that we're going to buy a maintenance agreement that a company would do that for us on our behalf.
Like our Xerox machines.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. One, one thing I do want to mention on the PPA is, the escalator is the thing you got to watch. So the danger of a PPA is 25 years from now, you ended up agreeing paying for maybe 12 cents per kilowatt hour, when the price is still 10 cents. You could end up paying more from the PPA than what the cost of electricity is. So that's the part that we need to, you have to be careful on a really long-term PPA. So that's why maybe shorter term, if you can figure that out and do something like that. So I'm sorry, I feel like.
I was just going to say, I mean, I, I feel like this conversation is just, one, really well-received, because we've been talking about it, but two, at a very preliminary basis, like we're, this is more of you just telling us, hey, there's options. Like, we're not really getting into the weeds about PPA versus cash right now, other than it's a possibility, right? And that we're going to be presented with more.
Right.
And we're interested in learning more.
Yeah, this is concept more advanced than last month, and I anticipate the next time will be more advanced.
I mean, we're not taking action to say move forward with anything, just we want to hear.
So set our expectation in terms of the timeline of when we can expect the next presentation. When is that realistic?
So the next committee meeting, I'll have numbers on all these different things, with some of the, some of the items mentioned in terms of long-term stuff as well. So it's, it's really, like, we have a lot of numbers, it's really us scheduling a meeting to go down, sit through the numbers, and for me to ask all my questions and pick out all the numbers. Just to be honest, like, that's what I do. So it's doing all that for the next committee meeting, so we would have that. I, I foresee any problems being able to do that.
Great.
Thank you, Dave, for your time. I do have one question on the incentives. It, it looks like we have to make a one-time capital investment. Incentives are paid out over time. Is there, are those incentives guaranteed over the 15 years? Or is there a possibility of it going away?
The incentives as they exist right now are, are guaranteed. There's a chance that, right now, the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed a year ago has all kinds of cash incentives for non-for-profits, like the 30% cash back. With that, there's also a 10% adder if you can buy local panels, US-made panels and racking systems. So there's a chance that you would get more incentives than it costs to put the solar on if the manufacturing catches up to the demand in the United States. And that's an exciting thing. As an educator, moving to renewable energy is the most exciting and dynamic thing our species has ever done. Today, it's crazy warm. If you read the chatter in the science world, the scientists are all scratching their head and very concerned because this is happening faster than anticipated. And so I think every, every flat roof deserves an opportunity to produce electricity and provide for a nice future for everyone, including our students.
Other questions, comments? Again, I think this is all good news, and we're excited to hear more.
And for transparency, Dave and I actually taught that AP Environmental Science class that I referenced earlier, and he can corroborate our scores.
Encouraging students often takes, takes no more than a response, or a adult mentor to say you can do it. Somebody that believes in them, they will move up, they will perform.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the bid for the Buildings and Ground Services.
I'm trying to tell him he can go.
That's okay, okay.
Thank you for joining us.
Thanks.
Thanks, Davis.
And for your patience in getting to this agenda item.
It's good to see hard work in there.
Thank you.
No, that's all right.
Okay, Buildings and Ground Services.
Yeah, we are really wanting just to inform the board that we are going out to bid for a major contract. This is one of the most major contracts that we have. This is bigger than our transportation contract. And so we've had the current provider for many, many years. But over the last several years, we've been, one, we, we've not liked the financial structure that we're under, and we've been having service issues that we've been unable to overcome. And so we would like to bid this out. And so the current provider's been notified, we're working on finalizing the bid documentation, and so we're looking to launch that as soon as we can. But I, so I wanted to let you all know that this is coming, a little bit of why. There, there is more information to share, but I'm just not quite ready yet, because I don't know, I need the, I need the final bid document ready, and we're just almost not, we're not quite there yet.
So will this be something we can put on next month's committee agenda to learn more about?
For sure. Yes, because we're, we would look at, in a perfect world, we would love to have something in place June 1st to take over once school's out.
So that would require us to vote on it no later than?
Our target is at the April Board Meeting.
Yeah, maybe would be too, a little too close.
It is, are, based on all the, based on all of the kind of checkpoints in the timeline, that is getting harder with each day, that passes for to do all the things that we want to do in a reasonable amount of time. So I'm still going to be hopeful that a target of April Board Meeting will work. So it, I mean, it's theoretically possible that I might need to request something special, but I'm, I'm not there yet.
Okay, keep it supposed to.
I've got a quick question. Last month, we approved a contract for landscape maintenance for the district. And forgive me for asking for clarity, exactly what does this entail, this service? I can assume, but I want to hear, kind of, I know you're going to tell us more soon, I just, so I can.
So, so this is our custodial maintenance and ground services. Landscape Maintenance does some ground services for some properties. Grounds does ground services for other properties. Mark can explain that which ones do which.
Yeah, the landscape services that we just approved does around the buildings. The high maintenance things. Our ground service takes care of all your snow plowing, all the stuff in the winter, and supports all our athletic events. So Libertyville High School, they're driving to several fields, lining them off-campus, doing, doing those type of things, supporting the, the rest of our, our property. For instance, we're, I think we're about 49 acres here. And our landscape department, I believe, does, maintains around 11 acres. And the rest is parking lot, and, you know, so basically by the stadium, softball fields, baseball field, we maintain those. And, and then our contract does around the buildings.
And this is also custodial service?
Yes, and then it's all the custodial service. And that's not only cleaning all the rooms, it's all the setup and support for all the events that go on in the buildings is part of it. And then obviously, the maintenance is a maintenance, maintenance to repair the day-to-day items that pop up and work orders that are taken care by the maintenance team.
So does that make sense? The grounds is really a lot of our athletic fields, and the landscaping is more just the normal grass around, around the buildings.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. And can I also just ask, how long have we been using this current group?
This 90s?
Oh, okay, it's been, it's been a while.
A long time.
Yeah, it, it actually started out, I believe, the original contract to ServiceMaster. Then it changed over, then Airmark, Airmark bought out ServiceMaster. Back in the early 2000s and late 90s, you know, that happened. There used to be Marriott, then it was Sedex, then it became Sedexo, and, you know, different companies bought up different people that were supplying the services. So they're one of the major ones in the United States.
Okay, thank you for the color, appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay, next on the agenda, band uniforms. And again, this sounds like a forewarning that something's coming.
It is, this is, it, it's pretty significant, but it, it is not unexpected, it is budgeted. It's a bid that we're opening, I think, Thursday. We're opening this bid, and so it's just the timing when it got posted wasn't available to be ready for tonight, but we're hoping, as soon as, as long as the numbers align with our budget, that we'll be able to recommend this for approval at our March Board Meeting, assuming it falls within what we expected. So thank Adam for a lot of work on putting that information together. So I just want to let you know it's coming, it will be a big number, but I'll be able to give context there.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, look forward to that. Fund transfer, Education to Transportation Fund?
Yes, oh, in our FY23 financial report and other information, I shared that our transportation fund went negative, excuse me, at the end of the fiscal year. That's because I didn't quite anticipate the delayed, the payment timings of when, because our, our transportation fund is funded either through tax levy or state reimbursement. The state reimbursement is based on your last year's expenditures. So for example, when we were in the times that shall not be named, there wasn't a lot of transportation expenditures, excuse me. So then the following year, there was not a lot of revenue from the state, because there were no expenditures from the prior year. So then, but that year, we still had the expenditures, because it was, we were back in. So that took a little bit longer to kind of work itself out than I was anticipating, and we went under by like 150,000 or something, 250,000, something like that. I don't want that to happen, and we really should not allow that to happen. So I'm recommending a transfer from a million dollars from EdFund into there that will give that a nice cushion, so that we should never have this problem again. But if y'all remember, even a few years ago, there's very specific rules about how funds can move from, how funds can move from fund to fund. The, the legal way to do this is referenced in the resolution, but you have to have a public hearing, and you have to have notice, we had that in the paper last Friday. And so we were able to have a hearing and then approve that at the March, and then I can make that transfer legally in our system. So this is more of a cleanup thing, I would say.
Any questions on that? Okay. Next on the agenda, Strategic Plan Budget?
Yes, so last year, we presented a lot of work done on the strategic plan and the action steps. And then a big question was, okay, well, how much is it going to cost? And so we worked with the Strand Leaders, who are the leaders of those three major goal areas, equity and inclusion, health and wellbeing, explore multiple paths. We put together our best thoughts in terms of what would actually happen and what would those things cost. So it was, this budget was meant to show the things that cost money. If something didn't cost money, we didn't include it on here, because this is really about the money. Well, a year has gone by, and we needed to update this, because a lot can happen in a year. And to no surprise, a lot did happen in the year. And so I'm giving you this update based on the Strand Leader's best thinking. So we met with the Strand Leaders two or three times, and some even individual conversations to walk through each of the information. So really, it, probably starting on page five in, in the thing, in the packet, is the real information. The other pages are just summary levels to give you a big picture view, which is great. But if you really want to understand what's happening, it's really that detail sheet starting on page five. And so what I tried to do was help clarify what's happening. So when a number changed, I tried to put a note in the right-hand column to indicate what changed. A lot of times, things were either delayed, like, we thought this was going to happen this year, and maybe it moved up a year or moved back a year, I wanted to show that. And you will see there are several things that are added that are new. That as we've progressed in one of these goal areas, the Strand Leader believes that these additional things are important in order to achieve the goal. The best example of that is probably related to Explore Multiple Paths. This time last year, we did not have Ben Rodriguez as our Director of College and Career Readiness, and we were guessing. They were educated guesses, but Ben is the expert, and these are the things that he's telling us, are the things that we need. So we've done our best to try to walk through these, ask questions, clarify, modify tweak, because, you know, as I try to say, there's only so much money that we have. And in order to prioritize these things, that means other things will not be able to be prioritized. So we tried to be thoughtful in terms of that. And knowing, not everything that's in here means it's more spending for us. Some things are already in place. For example, hiring Ben was in this chart. Paying for Ben is in our budget right now. So paying for him next year doesn't mean we add the number that's in there, it's just. It's just the, if, I'm hoping he'll get a raise. Right? So that's really what we're talking about, right? That's, that's the incremental cost. I, I can't show just that. That's a little too fancy. But what I tried to do is things that particularly the focus is fiscal 25. If you were going to focus on something, focus on fiscal 25 because this is the document I'm going to use to put in things in our budget for fiscal 25 or to make sure that our strand leader's included, but they left. Make sure that they include it in their, their budget requests. So if it's green, that means that is something that will add to our budget. That is not something that is in it right now. So that will be a net add to our budget. If it is yellow, that means it is not a total add, it's a tweak. So it, either the prior number wasn't the same or it went up a little bit or went down. So the best example is on maybe page six, we had the career exploration system. We had 23,000. That was our introductory cost that we, we put in there. But next year, we're going to have to pay the full cost, which is going to be 40,000. So it's not a 40,000 total add, it's really a 23 incremental, but I'm trying my best to show you the total cost. But the total cost in the sheet doesn't necessarily mean total new money added to our budget. Those are not the same things. It's a little difficult to try to parse out the difference, but I did my best to try to show that with the bottom lines, that total new cost and modify existing cost. That, um, let me think. That really, I think, is the summary of the information that I have. I've got a different, different summary pages to show goal area, what the money is, whether it's a consultant, whether it's a fee, whether it's materials, professional learning, summer curriculum is in there, technology, things like that. I tried to show as many ways as I could try to think to show you this information.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Comments? It's a lot of numbers.
Well, I think it's really well done.
Yeah.
It's very transparent.
Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions, but I didn't have a chance to drill down on a granular level at some of the requests. So I'm just planning on emailing Dan and Denise with those questions so that you have time to look at those answers instead of trying to do it on the fly.
Um, next item, last item on the, for discussion agenda, community engagement update.
Mary. Yeah, go for it.
Okay. I'm going to give you a brief update and then Dan is going to share a presentation. And the update is, back in January, you all approved the charge for us to move forward with our community engagement program. And that basically is for a group of citizens to come together to help assess our community's education values, determine what projects will enhance student learning, co-curriculars, opportunities and wellbeing in our district, to create actionable steps to fund and implement that plan and to develop a written report that they will present to you, informing the, informing you of the information that they've gathered and a summary of all the feedback they've obtained. So to date, the committee has met three times and we've got about 20 consistent members that have been coming. Good cross-section of our community in terms of age and demographics and locations. And they've divided into subcommittees with the help of our, our team from Creative Anerash. And they are currently working on developing the, the, the big engagement events that we are going to be hosting at both schools in April. And there's four, four dates, two at Libertyville, two at Vernon Hills. We've scheduled two on a Saturday, then we have one on a Wednesday and a Tuesday. So there's some variety when people have availability. And those sessions are going to be an opportunity for them to come in to the schools. They will be welcomed, present, a little welcome address from Denise. And then they will rotate to three sessions. So they will see a presentation on finance, which will be a abbreviated version of what Dan is going to show you tonight. There will be an opportunity for a student-led tour of certain areas of the school that we're, we're focusing on. And there will be a presentation by each principal, along with Mike Henderson from STR, who they'll talk about what some of our needs are, show them the list. And Mike will focus on, you know, here's what things could look like. Here's, here's trends in education right now that, that we could consider at our schools. And then finally, there's an event at the end where everyone will gather and provide feedback and will move forward with that information after that. So they're working on that. They're, the name of the process is D128 Forward. And we're working on finalizing the, the logo. So it's not quite ready to publicly share yet. Did you have a question?
I didn't want to interrupt you, but before we moved on to Dan's presentation, what's the communication plan for making sure that we have the maximum number of community members who are aware of and can attend these events?
So the three subcommittees that the group have broken off into, and, and they're kind of supporting each other. So it's not just, you're just communications, but communications, there is a group that's working on community outreach. So working with, you know, tapping larger, like the feeder schools and, you know, bigger entities like that. And then there's also one that is called the canvassing group. And they, and it's not canvassing in terms of a, you know, an election. It's more going out and it's a whole process where they will go out like in their neighborhoods and they'll have door hangers. And we haven't gotten too deep into that yet, but it's going to be, you know, a, a team of people and they will be recruiting other people. It's not just the team of one.
The canvassing is more personal invitations.
Yes. So, um,
From a district model, how is the district going to support that communication about these events? I'm just really interested in hearing how we're going to take these plans and make sure that they are made really public so that everybody is.
Lisa, you need to use your mic.
Sorry. I'm just want to know what the plan is for the district to support what the plans are to make sure that the word gets out.
At this point, we're still working on the details of, yes, the content. Thank you. But there is a very defined, robust communication plan that I will support along with the folks on the, on the team. So yeah, it'll, you'll be tired of hearing about it by the time we're done.
Okay.
So that's where we are with the group work. There is, if you're looking at the report that's in the board packet, there is a, one date change, but you'll get all this information later. There's a Wednesday, April 24th was it, which is actually going to be Tuesday, April 23rd. We had some conflicts, but.
No, it's Wednesday, the 24th.
We changed it.
Yeah.
Two Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay. My bad.
No, no, you're good. You put the right information in the package. So thank you.
All right. Never mind what I just said. But we, we have a, a really interesting group that we're working with and several of our board members, some folks on staff. So it's been really good so far. So I will turn it over to Dan and he's going to share some of the presentations that he's shared with our team.
So speaking of tired, tired of hearing from it, let me walk you through. I'm going to try to do it quicker because the learning curve for y'all should be a little bit shorter because y'all have heard a lot of, some of this information already. So let me do my best to walk through as informed and in efficient ways I can, what the committee really saw in terms of trying to introduction in terms of school finance. There we go. So for D128 finances, this is a chart we've seen before in terms of how our schools funded. So schools are funded in primarily three ways. Our local community, and that's mostly property taxes. It also includes student fees, interest income, things like that. Second source of money is from the state. The state can give schools a variety of different funding mechanisms and the federal government. So no different than you personally, how, think of how many different sources of income you might have. Maybe you have a lot or maybe you just have a few. That's the same for us. We just have a few. What you find overall in the United States is that on average, there's an equal share between the local community and the state. And then the federal kicks in a bit of money. That's in general what you find across the United States when you look at schools across the country. In Illinois, however, it is a little bit more dependent on the local community. And so the state doesn't contribute the majority of, of funding to schools. That is mostly done by the local community. And actually that chart is more red than it used to be. It used to be a lot less, both because of evidence-based funding, they've put more money into that model and kind of an accounting change in terms of how they're, how they're counting contributions to the pension fund. But in Illinois, regardless, more of the, more of the funding is on the local community. And then this is the chart for District 128. Eighty-eight percent of our revenue comes from property taxes. Ninety, ninety-four, ninety-five percent of our revenue comes from the local community around us. And so I think the key takeaway is the state doesn't give us much money. The, the money we do get from the state matters. It's a few million dollars and we want that money, but the state does not contribute much to our system. And the idea is that it, if we're going to, if we need more money for something, it's not going to come from the state is the point here. So those are the different ways that schools are funded, particularly how District 128 works. So when you're talking about facility improvements, how do you pay for them? Well, it's kind of simple. It's no different than if you wanted to renovate the kitchen in your house. How do you pay for it? You either have cash saved up or you need to borrow money. No different for schools. So for cash, when we're talking about paying cash, we're, we're talking about using our fund balance. And so we know what fund balance is. I'm not going to explain that, but that's how we pay for it for cash. And then on debt, the issue, not the issue, the point of, of, of debt is not, not really hard about getting the debt that we have, we're very strong, a lot of places will lend us money. The trick is how do you pay it back? So either, so if you think about yourself, if you refinance or if you want to renovate your kitchen and you want to borrow money, say you do a home equity loan, you have to pay it back, right? How do you pay it back? Pay it back out of your monthly budget. You have to. So either we pay it back out of our annual budget or we pay it back with additional taxes. Those are, and then the two ways are school building bonds, debt service extension base. I'll explain those when we get there. So those are really how districts can pay for facility improvements. In terms of using cash for our fund balance, this is a twenty-five, six-ish year history of our fund balance. And this is me looking back in the records, kind of as far back as I have to see what's, what's been happening. And I really broke it down into four different, four different sections. The first section is in 1998, you can see the fund balance dropping. That literally is the district paying for the construction of Vernon Hills High School. So before then, they had issued the referendum, they had, they had gotten the money. Now they're actually building it, so the cash is going down. Then in 2001 enters a new phase, and I'm calling that the ref, the referendum in growth. So in 2001, there was a referendum passed to operate, an operating referendum to give the district more money in their annual levy, really to fund the operations at Vernon Hills High School. And that referendum kicked in and growth took over. And so that's what you're seeing for the next roughly 12, 13-year period is the growth in the fund balance due to that referendum and everything kicking in. So then, starting in 2013, you see the number going down. That is really what I'm calling the capital investment phase. That is when the district decided to move forward and paying cash on many different projects. And I'll, I'll show you some information on that in a second. So that's what's been happening really over the last 10 years. And then a few years ago, 2022, you see that drop down, that, don't be alarmed, you were here. Well, some of you were here when we did that. That was deferring our property taxes. And so what that does is lower our fund balance. But really what it's doing is saying that our spring taxes that we got aren't really for the current school year, they're really for next school year. It's the same thing as if you get paid on the 30th of the month. Like, do you really have that money or does your mortgage payment come to you a few days later? That's the idea we're talking about. The money that we get in May for property taxes is really to fund our next year's school system. So really what I'm saying is that entire line chart should have shifted down, which really tells you how much they really needed that referendum back in 2001. You see what I mean? That would have been a very, very low point. So in terms of capital investments, this is the history of the outlay that we have done over the last 10 years. And so you can see some years, there are many millions of dollars that are spent. And one of the things that I, I am genuinely proud of is that we're able to use cash to pay for it. Because when you borrow money, you have to pay it back with interest. I'm not kidding. We avoided tens of millions of dollars of interest by paying cash. And I think that is noteworthy and I think that is absolutely admirable. I'm just going to pause here. Here are projects that we've done over the last 10 years. Just going to pause and let you look at it. Some of you were here when we did these, some of you didn't. Some we're still working on right now. These are the kind of projects we're talking about. The ones that we've done, the ones that we want to do. Butler Lake Hall, renovating the little pool and the dance studio below. It's beautiful. The fieldhouse, a regut and done. We've done a lot of big things. So that's the projects that we've done now in terms of the projects that we're looking to do. This is the list of projects, right? The list. What's the list? This is the list of projects that hopefully y'all are sick of seeing at this point. This is the list from last year that we presented to you of the additional projects that we're looking to do. So I've removed the projects that were already in process. Now these are, these are new. So the first one is really continuing the bathroom renovation because I told you we can only pay for some of them. We can't do all of them. So this is continuing that renovation and science labs and so forth. That's the process we went through. So those are the additional projects that we're talking about doing. And what I'm saying is, from a cash perspective, and, and this, let me, oh, let me see. Yeah. From a cash perspective, this is not me, well, you all know this. This is not me saying we don't have money. We absolutely have money, right? We've got, you take that line over, you're talking about $40 million, which is true, but we're also, we've got some of that earmarked for the cafeteria and those other projects. And now we're going to be at, so if you think of, we're at a $100 million budget. And what do they say? Good practice for fund balance percentage. What's our percentage?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. That's close though. So 25 is the number. So you're talking on $100 million, that's about $25 million. That's the number that we don't really want to go lower in our fund balance. So that's, that's really where the difference is between 40 million that we have and what I told you we have money for. That's really the threshold. So once we get to 25 million, we really should not be going anymore, lower, any, any lower. So what I'm saying is, we don't have cash to pay for these projects. So if you don't have cash, then your option is to issue debts. And so you could repay with your annual budget. Well, let's look at that. This is kind of a condensed version of the financial projections. So this is showing a few years in the past and a few years in the future. This is not the full five-year projection. This is just focused on recent history and future. You can see the last two fiscal years, they were at a deficit. This year, small surplus, and the next year, you can see that. What we're saying is, on order to do the kind of projects you're talking about, the repayment is millions of dollars. So to do $30 million worth of projects costs millions of dollars to repay that debt each year. And what we're talking about is on the list, but it's also about what's not on the list right now. That was last year's list. Like, we're still collecting information. We've got a lot of great ideas submitted so far in our process this year that will end, you know, people can still submit that through the end of this week. And so 30 million is what's on the list right now, but that'll change as we go through this process again. So what I'm saying is, we do not have the ability to afford a million or multimillion-dollar debt payment into our annual operating expenditures. So then, if you don't have the cash and you don't have the money in your annual budget, your only option then is to repay with additional taxes. And the primary way that's done is through school building bonds or debt service extension base. Let me explain school building bonds first. That is the most common way that you see big capital projects done in schools. And so what it does is it asks a question. The way it works is it's, it says, we want to, we want approval to borrow, for example, illustration only $100 million for a specific project, for example, maybe a new building. I'm not saying we're, we're doing that. This is just an example. This is just an example. You want to say, I want to borrow $100 million to build a new building and you would pay that back over 20 years. That's most common. So if you, if you look back at referendum, go on the webs, go on the county website and look at the history, you'll see, you'll see things like that. For, it's a big chunk of money for very specific projects and then those are paid back over usually 20 years. This is very similar. This is very similar to a mortgage. I want that house. Bank, will you lend me X hundred thousand dollars to buy that house? And I will pay you back over fifteen, thirty years, something like that, right? That's exactly what school building bonds, that's a good analogy. D sub, debt service extension base, is different, and that looks weird, and I know that, but let me explain it. It's weird, but it's not uncommon. So debt service extension base, the best way I can do that is to use the building blocks. So the noun in that phrase is "base." So when you see the word "base," that means a certain amount of money. All right? So when we hear "base," we think a certain amount of money. Extension, that stands for annual property taxes. So we're used to talking levy and extension here, so that's about our annual property taxes. So it's a certain amount of annual property taxes, okay? Then debt service is the last term. That is, that term means repaying the debt. So when you service a debt, you're paying the debt off. So a D sub, a debt service extension base, is a certain amount of annual property taxes that can be used to pay off debt. D sub, is a certain amount of annual property taxes used to pay off debt. That's what a D sub is. I know that sounds weird, but it's not uncommon. This is a chart of Lake County and the high school districts. The blue are districts that have a D sub, debt service extension base. The yellow are districts that do not. We are amongst the three districts in the county, I'm not County McHenry, or whatever that district is in the corner, where Antioch, Lake Forest, and also the three districts that do not have it. So it sounds like a weird concept, but it's not. And I should go back, the debt service extension base, oh, never mind, I'm going to explain that in a second. Yeah. So to explain it, school building bonds, X number of money for a specific project, or you pay back over about twenty years, very much like a mortgage. Debt service extension base is a certain amount of money of property taxes, annual property taxes to repay debt. An example of how that would look is you could have up to five million dollars per year for any projects. You're not specific on the projects, it's about the annual amount of money. This is like a line of credit. It's like a line of credit. It's an amount of annual taxes that you can draw on each year to pay back debt. So that's what a building bonds and a D sub are in terms of how they function. A huge difference in what are the potential cost implications. So again, to illustrate the difference, I'm just showing a hundred million for an example. On the building bond side, this is how it would work. You borrow a hundred million dollars. In order to pay that hundred million dollars off for twenty years, your payment would be about eight-point-five million. So then, over the course of that lifecycle of that debt, you would have paid one-hundred-and-sixty-five million, which means for the hundred million of principal you're getting, you're paying back sixty million, sixty-five million of interest. That is a lot of money, but don't look at your thirty-year mortgage and try to calculate how much interest you're paying on that. It's a huge percentage. Or it's a lot of money, but that's the point. The longer you borrow money, the more interest you pay. A scenario like that would be three-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars to give an illustration on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house. Again, I'm not saying this is what we should do, but purpose of this is to illustrate the difference between school building bonds and a D sub. Versus under a D sub, what you could do is borrow twenty-five million dollars every five years. So then, over the period, that same twenty-year period, you've got essentially a hundred million, but because you're borrowing for a shorter period of time, smaller amount of money for a shorter period of time, your interest is much less. So to service that debt on an annual basis would be about five-point-six million. So then, over the total life of all of that, all of that debt and borrowing and everything, you're talking about paying one-hundred-and-thirteen million. It's literally a fifty-million-dollar difference in interest. That's significant to me. So that is, that's why I said, I think D sub is something worth looking at, but that is a mechanism that is there. And so the difference on a homeowner, for an average, you know, four-hundred-thousand-dollar market value home, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars based on those numbers. So those are a few months old, all that kind of stuff. So once we would progress further down something, we wouldn't want to know more current numbers. But this is essentially what we're talking about in terms of a D sub, and the difference between that and a traditional school building bond. So that's really how schools can fund projects, and that's really the mechanism and how that would work. That is the end of the presentation. Some of this you've seen before, some of this you have not seen yet, so.
Questions, comments?
Well, regardless of whether it's a referendum or a D sub, it's still a ballot initiative, is that correct?
The options, so going back, you don't have the cash, and you don't have the room in your annual budget, the only options you have require additional taxes, and those additional taxes require voter approval.
But I'm hearing how we, because this is feedback for us too, because we want what we're presenting at these community sessions to be as clear as possible. So you asking that question was me wanting to jot down, this might need to be three columns rather than two. It's three choices. Putting them under issued debt is making it sound like they're very similar, but they're not, they're different. It's cash, or pay in your budget, or borrow more money.
Can we go to the slide with the numbers? I had just one question on that. So when we see this, this is all under the debt column. With the building bond, you are borrowing the entire amount for a specific project over those number of years. Whereas with D sub, you're borrowing, you're getting an amount per year to repay the debt. Are you using the whole amount each year, or can that amount vary over a couple of years? Like, can we use four million this year and six million next year, for example?
As long as your D sub can be as high as six million. So let's say your D sub is six million, you don't have to use it all, but you can't go more than that.
You can't average it out over a couple of years. If you use less this year, you don't get more next year.
No, no, it's because it's an annual amount of taxes. So if it was six million, for example, you can build the debt repayment so that it pays off at six million dollars a year. And then the function of how much you can borrow is really just a function of how long you're borrowing the money for, and what are the interests in the market to tell you what principal you can actually get.
Okay.
So, did I answer your question?
So that limit, to say it stated another way, that limit is the average annual debt service limit is what they vote. If you say it's six million dollars, that's where it's capped. Not how much you can borrow each year, but how much is the repayment of the total amount that you've borrowed.
The D sub, debt service extension base, that is the certain amount of money that you can, of annual taxes you can use to pay back debt. So in this scenario, the D sub is that five-point-six million dollars.
Yeah, so I don't know how you try to explain that, but I think that's an important component of this, that this is just an example of what a hundred million dollars in work to our buildings over the next thirty years would look like. One is the Big Bang, you do it all at once, which we know is, at the age and the condition of our buildings may not be the best. But the other is, you can borrow it over time in increments, as long as we don't go over that debt service number.
Yeah, so there's a lot of nuances with both of these, and I could spend an hour talking about each of them. The intention is try to give a high-level view, but I know there's naturally always questions that come up. There's pros and cons to it. One of the cons on the big number side is, you basically get a chance every twenty years at doing stuff. And you got to, you have a short, relatively short period of window time to do it, and then you're done, and you kind of have to wait. The D sub option gives you a chance to be flexible. So every five years, if something new or different comes up, you have the ability to react. You're more flexible.
Yeah, to me, though, the question on the ballot, on the building bond is the hundred million. On the D sub, it's the annual debt service number, not the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. It's that overall. So, and I don't know how you could explain that, or how to make that easily understandable to somebody that's just seeing this for the first time, but, you know, it's...
We did get a lot of positive feedback from the community members when Dan delivered this presentation. Some of you were in the room then. So I know, again, we'll continue to refine it, but they felt like, oh, that's what you're talking about. Like, a lot of light bulbs went on about the difference between both the large chunk of money and the smaller chunk of money, and why, based on the list of things that we need, we don't have a hundred million dollars worth of stuff. But we anticipate, because of the age of our buildings and the changing needs of education, we're going to continue to have four, five, six million dollars worth of things to keep up with.
Over a period of time. And I think the other number is the estimated impact to the homes and what you're going to see, because that's what people are, would be interested in.
Yeah, and again, this was not meant to be a preview of what the community will see. This was to show you what we showed the facilitating team, because to help get their heads around what we're talking about, so they can help like, well, what kind of questions should we ask? What kind of information? What information more do we need? Or what the community need to know to help us understand this? That was the point of sharing that information with them. I would not give this to a community. There's probably portions I would share, but this is not the presentation I would give the community.
Okay, that makes more sense, yeah. Other comments, questions?
So the, in the community engagement, there, when they go to one of the facilities, there'll be three different groups. Is this presentation one of those groups, or something similar to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Eli, did I forget to share my screen? I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, we got to do it all over again. Start from the beginning, no. No, I think, you know, we've all seen much of this in the past. I think, to me, if we're looking at community feedback, most people have been involved in some way, or understanding what a building bond is, and the whole analogy to a mortgage is pretty straightforward. I think this other, the D sub is a little foreign to most people, and, you know, I think it's, my opinion, it's the best option for where we are. But, you know, I think that's part of the whole plan, is to get some feedback, and how do we, how do we explain this? And how do we move forward with looking at these options as options for the future?
And again, that's, that really is the point of the community engagement. So the facilitating team has been trying to meet and understand so that we can plan for how to engage the community. The facilitating team is not the community. They're a subset of the community to help us plan how to engage the community. So it's really those public events, and then the survey and stuff like that, that will actually give us real information on what the community actually thinks or believes.
One of the other things that there was very positive response to was the idea of showing how good stewards of district money the board, the past boards have been, that we've been able to pay for so much capital improvement out of cash and avoid all those interest payments. But the idea of that surplus has been depleted. So over, you know, some of them said, we haven't had a referendum since 2001. Well, you're right, because we haven't needed one, because we've been sort of reinvesting in our facilities. We're not going to be able to continue that. So it shows that need based on really good stewardship, and here's how we've invested the money, but for us to continue those practices, this is now the choice that we need to make. So I also really appreciate how Dan was able to tell that story about, you know, sort of like his own little era's tour, we're going to call him the Taylor Swift of school financing. You've got the decades going there.
And I will say, that activity, and I was around for a bunch of that, you know, while the board took the actions to make a lot of those things happen, that was based on a lot of feedback from the community. We had a lot of feedback saying that, you know, as we're building some fund balances here, what should we be doing with this? And there was lots of discussion on, okay, let's just ask for less on our tax bill, or let's invest in our buildings. And I think we, the decision to do what we needed to do with our buildings was a good one. But now we're at the point again where we need to revisit how we do that in the future.
And we are not at the point that we need a hundred million right now. There are districts that are at that point. We're trying to push, we're trying to push that, because I know, like, I know the long-term cost of that, and I don't think that's, I think there are better options for us.
And I think one of the, you know, to that point, if we did, if we maintained and invested in our facilities over a period of time, rather than the traditional hundred million dollars every, you know, twenty years, or whatever it is, I think you're going to avoid that next big, you know, big building bond kind of thing for quite some time, if we're adequately maintaining and updating our buildings on a regular basis.
I'd say, as I've heard this conversation, and I was in the original presentation, some things that are coming to my mind is, when this goes to presentation at those forums, you should have the real numbers. Because if you have a hundred million and twenty-five million, that's what people are going to remember, even if the real numbers are lower. That will be very hard to get over that transition. It happens all the time. People remember the first set of numbers they saw.
I would agree. Also sat in now two of those sessions, and I felt like those numbers were really powerful in bringing everything into perspective for nearly everyone I spoke to that evening. And not to be dismissive of what those numbers mean to some people, simply saying that it really helped kind of paint the picture of what the impact would be on the average homeowner.
And then the third, to your point, the third meeting, we talked about like, what would be some things we could show people? And part of, excuse me, part of that was options. And with those options would be real numbers attached to those. So those are, we were talking concept about those numbers, but we're working on getting what real numbers would actually be.
And I think the other thing also, and you probably have talked about this, is be very clear when you show what's going to be on the D sub, at the actual referendum. What are we getting for that? And then what's the impact? Like, you've got all of the pieces here, but you need to really highlight the key messages. What will be on the referendum? What's the impact to an average, you know, homeowner with that value? And then what are we getting? What value are we getting for that? If you have those like three blocks of numbers, the earlier we can get that, and that's what everybody starts seeing, that's what they're going to remember.
That's the number that is going to get stuck in their mind. That's how it works.
Anybody will walk away from this thinking that we need a hundred million dollars. That's not what we're asking for. I mean, we can't even support a hundred million dollars right now. The most we can support is this thirty million based on our prioritized list.
I have a more general question. I am very appreciative of this update, and I think it's so important that we continue to move forward with the community engagement. What I'm not clear about is why our consultant is recommending the November ballot, and why this timeline, why we have this aggressive timeline for that particular ballot, and why not perhaps waiting until the spring might be more advantageous?
Well, I just, I want to be clear, I don't know that I've heard that the consultant is recommending you go in November. Like, that's not, just to be clear, like, that's not what, they're not recommending that we go in November. I think what they're saying is, there are advantages to do it, to looking at November, which I just think it's a slightly nuanced difference. It's not like creative entourage is saying, you should go in November. I think what they're saying is, if you're going to look at this, there are advantages or disadvantages to different periods of time. Just to give that nuance.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
But they have provided us with some information about the advantages of different times of going to the ballot. And November does have typically a higher pass rate per school ballot question. April tends to be a smaller, much smaller turnout, but it also tends to be, because in general, people who go to the polls tend to be older. So if you have a smaller turnout, and it's mostly older people who tend to be less likely to vote for a tax increase, you're going to have a less likely chance to pass. you're gonna have a less likely chance to pass. So November, and it could, you know, there's a lot of things that can impact things in our world, politics being one of them. But, in general, November has a, has a higher pass rate.
Thank you.
That was also way back from when we were considering what financial options we had, and our financial consultant came and presented, and she showed the list of referendums in the last four years and which ones passed. There was a huge increase in those that fell on the November elections instead of April elections. So again, they're not forcing us to do that, but they want this to be successful. So they're setting the board up for the opportunity over the summer to say, "Yes, we want to do this, and we're prepared to put it on the April, excuse me, the November ballot, should we make that decision."
I actually remember them talking about it when they were here. I think November 1 is also a presidential election, which just tends to have higher turnout.
Turnout.
So I guess the, what, what I was wondering was, is the higher turnout correlated with a higher chance of success? Because obviously a presidential election is gonna have a much higher voter turnout. What I wasn't clear on is, does that equate to a higher chance of success if we do put something on the ballot? And what I'm hearing is, that the answer to that is yes, so I appreciate the clarification.
And when the engagement part ends, and the group has given its recommendations to the board, whatever the decision is that the board makes by August, when we wrap up in June, we're still going to keep getting that message out there. Just about what we've learned and the importance of, of everything, because you don't want to stop talking about it, and then suddenly you've got two months, or, you know, whenever school starts and we start amping up.
You lose the momentum.
Right, yeah. Which also is something they said about March and April. You're, you're trying to get your communications really going, especially with March. And people don't want to do that during the holidays. So there's a lot, they're kind of tuning things out, and it's a different time of year.
Makes sense, thank you.
And also, I think whether it, whether it passes or doesn't pass, either way, you have more people that have voted for that decision in, in one time period versus if you have a pass in the April, but you had a lower turnout. It's less representative.
Less, makes sense.
Okay. Other comments? Okay, thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mary, and everybody else. It's a lot of work and a lot of work to come, so looking forward to that. Next on the agenda is the future agenda items. Listed there, anyone have anything to add to that?
Just something to emphasize that April 8th, we're requesting a special board meeting because of the timing for the cafeteria to the bathrooms, right?
Bathroom remodel, yes.
So...
So just a, a quick date up on the bathroom remodel. We'll be receiving bids for the abatement this Friday. And then, the, through Gilbane, the bids are due the 25th of the month, and then they will vet all the, all the bids, and, you know, and we'll have everything ready to discuss at the April 8 FNF for approval, once we have all those numbers together. And then we're asking for the special board meeting after the FNF to approve, if we're willing to go forward with those numbers at that time.
Just as an FYI, I will not be in attendance that night.
I will also not be in attendance that night.
Which one?
April 8th.
April 8th. I'll be at a conference, presenting at a conference.
We would need the other five board members here then, so if you have any other conflicts, just let us know, so we can be prepared.
Okay. Anything else on the, on the future agenda items? Okay. Hearing nothing, I'll call the FNF adjourned. Thank you, everybody.